I am calling back to order this meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education. Item 4.1 Broadcast Statement, which will be read tonight by student member, Board Member Nguyen.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, May 20th at 6:00 PM and Monday, May 21st at noon and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form located in the back of the community room and give them to our communications representative along with any handouts that you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is on the agenda, we ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also turn off your cell phones or place them on silent or vibrate. Thank you.
Thank you, Student Board Member Nguyen. Item 4.2, The Pledge of Allegiance, which tonight we have the pleasure of having been led by the John F. Kennedy High School and School of Engineering and Sciences Robotics Team. And I understand that you have some of the robots that you have built on display. Wow. That's pretty cool.
They were going to give the pledges? Well, then you guys have to come up if the robots aren't going to speak.
Somebody, please come forward to the microphone to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Both of you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a special certificate which will be presented by Vice President Wu.
I'm going to mention Science and Engineering Robotics first because they were the first team that I was notified of that made it to the world championship. So, the SESSTEMICS Eliminators Team 3598 was founded in 2011 and at the School of Engineering and Sciences, SES. They have always strived to make robotics accessible for all and increase diversity program-wide. They have increased exposure and access to robotics instruction to younger students in the Sacramento City Unified School District and beyond, but also increased access to students at their own school. Students are prepared even if they've never joined another robotics program because they have gained the expertise to make informed decisions regarding their future educational and career endeavors. How do they get 20% of a Title I school's population to take interest and enjoy something as obscure as robotics? The magical formula is not rocket science, but close. In 2014, Team 3598 made a goal to sincerely commit to not only build robots, but instill integrity, resilience, teamwork, and character building. They met and exceeded their goals by, one, providing a program free of charge, only asking for the dedication to the program both while they are students at SES and during their collegiate and professional careers. Two, robots are used as a tool to develop critical thinking, collaborative skills, and most importantly, develop and foster confidence. The main focus is always the student. Three, groundbreaking and pioneering workshops that introduce and expose underrepresented students to vast STEM-related fields. These workshops have proven to be an invaluable recruitment tool for our school and STEM field. The SESSTEMICS Eliminators created a pay-it-forward culture where students developed a passion for STEM and community. In 2018, something unexpected, amazing, and magical happened. Team 3598 for the SESSTEMATIC Eliminators won the Engineering Inspiration Award at the Idaho Regional Robotics Competition that resulted in them competing the world championship-level robotics competition held in Houston, Texas. Congratulations go out to Sophia Abdegoz, Brian Avino Cija, Denise Brazier, Padong Chang, Yoki Chang, Charlize Cruz, Mary De Leon, Otetti Finau, Axel Flores, Samantha Height, Abubeka Hessen, Heino Sisian, Kenla Lane, Daniel Leon, Robert Leon, Carlos Medina, Seon Michael, Melina Melanie Morris, Max Muscat, Noah Peoples, Hector Ramirez, James Rudolph, Daniel Serrato, Ma Noor, Shaquille, Chris Thomas, Michael Torres, Itake Yumana, Simon Vang, Sierra Williams, Kane Shong, Rihanna Yarzada, Sabrina Yarzada. Congratulations, SES. Stay right there because now it's John F. Kennedy, and both of you all are my high school, so I'm so proud. What does it take to build a championship robot? Ask Robert Green, and he or any of his 25 team members can show you. Where is he? Hiding behind a robot, I think. Thank you, Mr. Green. Started in 2009 by career technical educator Robert Green, the team has received more than 20 awards for design, performance, and safety awareness, including an International Student Leadership Award for Autumn Luna Peran 2017 Dean's List, and one to Mr. Green for coaching the 2014 Woody Flowers Award. Kennedy Robotics traveled to Houston in April to compete in the world championship for first after qualifying two weeks earlier in Calgary, Canada. At Worlds, the team ended in ninth place in a field of 67 teams in their division, over 400 total in competition. They ranked three at the Sacramento Regional and also competed in Flagstaff, Arizona this year. Robotics students are a little crazy. Why else would they voluntarily sign up to work long hours, starting in the summer, and endure a grueling schedule during the six-week build season where they have to work together to build a competition robot? They do this to develop leadership, time management, and team-building skills in addition to CAD drafting, design, manufacturing, welding, and safety skills, and to be part of something much bigger, a worldwide community of students who also find it fun and challenging. We thank our sponsors for making our program possible and for helping to fund our travel to Houston, John F. Kennedy High School, SCUSD, the Gene Haas Foundation, Monsanto, First, Universal Network Development Corporation, Aerojet Rocketdyne, and many more individuals. Congratulations go to Hunter Baird, Ryan Brown, Jenna Chen, Glenn Collins, Luke Collins, D.R. Farah, Enrique Garcia, Frankie Wong, Michael Wong, Kaylee Casey, Mateo Lee, Nolan Leong Gruelish, Karice Lin, Jason Liu, Bradley Nielsen, Koo Shaw, Non, Frankie Ortiz, Matty Sellers, Ryder Sellers, Clarissa Smith, Matthew Stringer, Drew Spinieski, Rex Torres, Ben Nguyen, Mia Whitfield, and of course, Mr. Robert Green, the coach and mentor, Ben Ballinger. And I just want to apologize in advance if I mispronounced your name, but that is the most talking I've done in total in the eight years I have been here. So, congratulations, JFK and SES. Would a representative from each school like to come up and say something?
On behalf of SES and Kennedy Robotics, we'd like to present a photograph signed by all the students from both teams to the school board in appreciation and one to our hero, Joe Steinemist.
Board Member Wu is going to come down and take a picture and present you with your certificates of achievement.
First is School of Engineering and Sciences Robotics Team.
And please feel free to come up and demonstrate your robots' movements if you would like.
Daryl does this all the time.
Yes, he does.
Trusty Wu.
Thank you again to all of the incredible students and the families that came out tonight, as well as the hard-working teachers to support those students. Moving on to item 5.0, Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Session.
I have none, Madam President, but the Superintendent has two announcements to make.
Thank you. I am pleased to announce that the Board, by a vote of six to zero with Board Member Hanson absent, approved the appointment of Nang Hur as Principal, Edward Kimball Elementary And I'm also pleased to announce that the Board, by a vote of six to zero with Board Member Hanson absent, approved the appointment of Tariq McFall as Principal, Albert Einstein Middle School.
Congratulations to those two new principals. Item 6.0, Agenda Adoption. If I can please ask for our student preferential vote.
I...
Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Don't move.
Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7.0, Special Presentation 7.1, The California Distinguished School Award Recipients. Tonight will be honoring Camellia Basic Elementary, Phoebe Hurst Elementary, William Land Elementary, which will be presented by Dr. Taylor, Mary Harden Young, and Olga Sims.
I have to wait for the robot to go by. We ask them to bring their bling. Board President Ryan, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Aguilar. The California Distinguished School Program honors some of California's most exemplary and inspiring public schools. Schools selected for the Distinguished School Award demonstrate significant gains in narrowing the achievement gap. The state recognizes elementary and secondary schools in alternate years. In 2018, California recognized outstanding education programs and practices in elementary schools. Schools recognized as a California Distinguished School awardee hold the title for two years. In 2018, California used a multiple-measures accountability system to identify eligible schools based on their performance and progress on the state indicators as specified in the California School Dashboard. Eligible schools were selected based on performance levels of all students and targeted student groups on the English learner progress, suspension rate, and academic indicators for the 2015-16 and 2016-17 school years. Participation rate, attendance rate, of at least 95% was also required. Eligible schools were notified by State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tom Torlicson, in early February, and an application was submitted along with an essay in March. Sacramento City Unified School District's three distinguished schools were honored at the California School Awards Ceremony at Disneyland Hotel in Anaheim on May 3rd. At this time, we'd like to recognize our three distinguished schools and ask the principals of each to give a brief summary of their award. They include Suzanne McKelvey at Camellia Elementary, Nate McGill at Phoebe Hurst, and Ellen Lee Carlson at William Land Elementary. And we should note that William Land was awarded not only the Distinguished School, but also the Exemplary Arts Award that evening.
Wow.
Hello, thank you, Members of the Board and Superintendent Aguilar. I'm really honored to stand here before you and to be in the same company and be recognized with William Land and Phoebe Hurst for receiving the California Distinguished School Award. I also have to give a lot of credit to my teaching staff and support staff and... And of course, our students, who actually made a lot of the gains, and then also our parents. And I also really want to acknowledge the team of teachers who worked with me, took some time out of their day to write the application and to research our best practices. So, our focus was, is an academic prep model that has a strong emphasis on academic, on mastering the academic standards through our gate cluster model while supporting the social-emotional learning needs through our school-wide class meetings. The gate cluster model specifically addresses the learning needs of our gifted students while at the same time uses those strategies and curriculum to support the common core standards in our general education program as well. And our class meeting model allows teachers and students to work together and collaborate to solve problems in a democratic way and in a supportive and respectful manner. And we are hoping that this is going to create self-discipline and responsible people when they come up. So, to bring these two pieces together really makes Camellia distinguished and continues to show that all students, whether gifted or not, can achieve at high levels as long as they're given the supports they need. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Members of the Board, Superintendent, Ellen prepared a lot, so I'll be as brief as possible. Thank you for recognizing us, our application centered around parent participation model. Really, at Phoebe, it's the driver for all the great things that happen in the kid's day other than the academics, and I think often those pieces are overlooked and not funded. So, we're grateful for our parents for doing extra so that their kids can have every single day, whether it's art or music or robotics, speech and debate. What we ask of our parents is just that they're as involved as we are in the lives of their kids, and so they return that in in kind. It's an honor to be recognized for something that seems so simple as parent participation, but one that we are really, really excited about. So, my team was wonderful, parents, of course, were wonderful. Thank you, Ellen Cochran, for your support. And I'm working through a pretty good stomach flu right now, so if I pass out, it's just a hydration issue, and if you could get me a Gatorade.
Go home, please. Congratulations, Nate.
Of course, I'm after him. This is where all the germs are. I know. Good evening, Superintendent Aguilar, Board President Ryan, and Members of the Board. It is an honor for William Land to stand here again tonight to receive this award. Again, not just for the Distinguished School Award, but also the Exemplary Arts Program Award. First, I would like to recognize a team of teachers, seven to be exact, who helped me craft the application. And again, it took time out of their busy days after school and on the weekends. Without their willingness to help, I don't know if I could have pulled it together. But the result of the students' achievement is really the collected efforts of everyone, our teachers, support staff, classified staff, parents, students, as well as our community partners. We truly believe that our school was distinguished for two reasons. For the two awards, for several reasons. One, obviously, we also are a gate cluster school. We have strong intervention supports that are accessible by all students, and also a dual-language Mandarin immersion program. School-wide, no matter what program you're enrolled in or no matter what your academic achievement levels are, all students and teachers are able to access science labs and science units with a culminating field trip throughout the year. And we also have teaching artists that collaborate with all of our teachers. So, our students, on a continuous basis throughout the year, are receiving arts instruction that are arts-integrated units that are developed by our teaching artists and our partners that are delivered in collaboration with our teachers. This is offered to our students not just during the regular school day, but also very robust within our after-school options. So, we hope to continue to do this work, and we thank you for this opportunity. And I'd like to thank our community that is present today and all of you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations.
We'd like to close out by honoring the members of the staffs, families, and communities that are in our audience from the three schools. So, if you would please stand so that we can...
Thank you again for your leadership and your tireless work on behalf of Sacramento City Unified School District students. Item 8.0, Public Comment. Mr. Barrios, do we have any public comment at this time?
We have nine public comments. If you could line up when you hear your name, please. We'll do them in order. David Fisher, Nikki Malevsky, John Perryman, Carl Pinkston, Karen Sweat, Darrell White, Dolores Delgado Campbell, Bernardo Buenrostro, Dr. Duane Campbell, and Frank DeYoung.
And before we start the clock, if I can just remind you to please remain at the two minutes to be respectful for everyone's time. Thank you.
Good evening, Members of the Board, Superintendent Aguilar. I'm Nikki Malevsky, First Vice President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. David would like to be here, but has to be a few minutes late tonight, so we apologize. I would like to begin the evening by thanking Superintendent Aguilar and Deputy Superintendent Lisa Allen for meeting with approximately 30 dedicated, thoughtful, committed CKM teachers who were able to explain why teachers there took the extraordinary step of voting no confidence in their administration. Contrary to some who have maliciously rushed to judgment to advance their own political aspirations after hearing only one side of a calculated smear campaign before themselves defaming educators who are taking the courageous step of standing up for their students. The Superintendent listened carefully, took extensive notes, asked a number of thoughtful questions while agreeing to follow up on a number of serious concerns raised, including new allegations of potential financial improprieties at CK McClatchy. We are pleased to see that a broader discussion initiated by SETA in our Contract Campaign about expanding arts and music into our classrooms moving to the forefront of the district's agenda. Similarly, we are further pleased to see that the district has taken the special education audit off the shelf and may finally be prepared to have an extensive conversation about developing a multi-tiered structure of support, like another proposal put forward by SETA in our last set of negotiations. Accompanying that is the reintroduced proposal from SETA to the district to introduce a systematic, district-wide restorative practices culture and a program with measurable outcomes and standards for evaluating its success. We are awaiting the district's response to our proposal. We are also waiting to hear back from the district on developing a comprehensive professional learning and support program for teachers as well as discussing a new calendar for 1920. And we have just scheduled a meeting with the district to discuss an implementation of the newly agreed-upon salary schedules, as well as potential changes to health plans which would enable us to maintain high-quality benefits while creating the resources to hire an additional 60 to 150 certificated educators in the district. To summarize, accountability, arts and music, multi-tiered structures of support, restorative justice, professional learning, calendar, and a new salary schedule, high-quality health plan at lower costs, more staff, and lower class sizes. We hope the district is up to the challenge of working with us to make Sac City the destination district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malevsky.
Hi, I'm John Perryman, a teacher at Burbank, very much an amateur looking at the budget. Greetings, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. Two weeks ago, I came to you with the question that since Burbank has about 6% of the targeted students, and we could only, I could only see about 800,000 of the supplemental concentration and grant money being spent on services for our students, I asked the question, where did the rest of the money go? And I've been spending a week looking at your LCAP plans. Largely, the difference in money has been spent as general fund money from supplemental and concentration grant money. Many people in positions of power are saying that's perfectly legal because you're above 55% targeted students. The state of California, however, in their guidance, says something different. It says you must distinguish between services directed towards targeted students and services available to all students. Your supplemental and concentration grant justifications do not do that. The ACLU, which successfully sued LA Unified on that very same issue, in ACLU and Community Coalition versus Los Angeles High School District, issues guidance, and it says you must provide services over the level of services provided to all students in that same LCAP year. Based on this information, it appears as most of your supplemental and concentration grant money is being misspent against state guidance. I also can't find who in the district looks specifically at this issue. There's lots of people who look at the budget as a whole. Who's looking specifically for compliance with state guidance on supplemental and concentration grant money? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Mr. Pinkston?
I was hoping you have a copy of my report.
We each do. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Carl Pinkston. I'm with the, today representing the Community Priority Coalition to present to you our alternative budget. I know tonight you will not have an opportunity to discuss the May revise as it relates to the budget, but I just wanted to let you know a couple of things about our alternative budget that will be useful for you in June when you're looking at the district budget that's being presented before you. Just to let you know that we're, it's a representative of, the Community Priority Coalition is representative of wide varieties of different organizations like the La Familia Causi Center Innovative Politics, Sacramento Act, Pro Youth, Making Sense Work, Sac City Teacher Association, Education Democracy Institute, Public Advocate, and League of United Latin American Citizens. A couple of things about our budget, just to highlight, and you'll have more of an opportunity to review in the future. We basically agree with your, we're going to agree with your revenue projection for General Fund I. We did not look at all the other fund, Fund Nine and some of the others. However, we wanted you to highlight, and we quote from the Governor revise about the additional one-time discretionary funds, so please take a look at that. We also, in our list of priorities and in a number of different items that we are requesting, we have increased what we think an additional certificated salary of eleven million, two million for classified, but we reduce books in supply by eight million to make it much more reflective of the trends. So, please take an opportunity to review it and have an opportunity for next month to go into greater detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. Ms. Swett?
Good evening, Karen Swett, Making Sense Work. The English language has a million trillion gazillion words in it. A budget is written in code, and it has about twenty-five or thirty words, or thirty codes, twenty-five or thirty codes. If you are truly sincerely interested in connecting spending to student outcomes and connecting the L cap to the budget, then you must be able to read and understand SAC's code. Again, about twenty-five, thirty words or codes. On the back of the single sheet that you got from me and from Carl is our, the alternative budget with our expenditures associated with the code that they would be included in. This is a real connection between the budget and the L cap because we listed the page, not the page number, oh yeah, pardon me, we did do the page number and the goal number in the L cap that's connected with that spending. And we used a drilled-down object code so that it would make more sense and so that it could be held accountable. The two things that you don't have in your budget, I've listed at the bottom as note one and two, again, you do not have any bilingual counselors as identified on the district website, and I gave you the URL on that. And you do not have any restorative justice specialists. There's two districts out there that have provided absolutely wonderful job descriptions, and I will be sending those to you to take a look at. If we had a job description for a restorative justice specialist position, we could slot it in to the nineteen hundreds.
Thank you, Ms. Swett. Mr. White?
Darrell White, Black Parallel School Board, President Ryan, fellow board members, Superintendent Aguilar. I have some wonderful news. As you know, in terms of conversations with one another, that we have tremendous concerns about how African-American students continue to lag behind all other students in all of those salient outcomes. But yesterday, during the Family Matters Show on ninety-seven point five KD, the Black Parallel School Board celebrated the completion of a plan to improve academic, personal, and social outcomes for African-American children. This effort actually begun over a month ago with thirty-five invited African-American CBOs and other interested persons to sit down and strategize. The strategy was around what kinds of objectives and activities that we could prioritize and put in a plan and offer as a resource to other organizations, entities, and so forth and so on. Twenty-five of those persons invited showed up at our offices to sit down and develop what we call a plan for raising the achievement of African-American students. For the last month, we have been going over draft after draft and inviting other people to the table to make comments and to read and so forth and so on. Now we have, now we have over fifty community-based organizations, African-Americans specifically, who have been participating, and the number continues to rise as people see other additional copies of this document. This document is unique because it's the first that I know of, a time when a large number of African-American persons and CBOs representative of the community have come together as one and says, hey, we need to come together and collaborate and come up with some ideas that we can use to join in with our partnership with the school district. And that has happened, and it's really exciting, it's really invigorating. Hopefully, at some point in the future, I can talk about how we are going to use this plan, and that's the most important piece. Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work, Darrell. I appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Dwayne Campbell. I'm the co-chair of the Education Committee of LULAC. That's the League of United Latin American Citizens. I speak first tonight in support of the Community Priorities Coalition proposal that you have in front of you. I want to inform you that LULAC Education Committee members have had meetings with the superintendent and with your finance people, and we've examined your budget in detail. As you know, under the Local Control Funding Formula, each English-language learner in your district receives a supplemental grant of twenty percent of the base grant. That means that last year and next year, the district will receive about six point seven million dollars for English-language learners. In your executive summary that you handed out a couple of weeks ago, you have the correct quote. It says, "Education Code fifty-two oh six one" says that L cap update must include, quote, "listing and description of expenditures that serve pupils designated as high need, as defined by Local Control Funding Formula and the Education Code." That means low-income English learners, homeless, and foster youth. In our reading of your budget, you have not done this in the prior years. And in our reading of the L cap that you have on the web at this time, you are not doing that. We recommend that you begin to do that. The budget documents from the past, working from the past and predicting your next one, which is coming, describe about thirty percent of where the funds for ELL students are being used. They don't describe where the other seventy percent are being used. We insist that in your future document, you describe where all the funds allocated for English-language learners are used. This problem is not for a lack of funds. You received the funds. What we want you to do is spend the funds on English-language learners rather than put them in your budget reserve. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we have three additional public comments. Four?
Superintendent Aguilar, board members, and district's administrative staff. My name is Bernardo Buenrostro. I am the immediate past president of Sacramento LULAC. LULAC is the League of United Latin American Citizens. We're a civil rights organization, and we're involved in this matter. We feel that the proper allocation of funds and tracking the expenditures of funds for English learners has become a civil rights issue. And so, I'm speaking to you tonight in support of the Sacramento Community Priorities Coalition budget. Now, in the past, we have met with the superintendent and admin budget staff. We have examined the budget. We're requesting additional funding for English learner, for English learners. And in addition to that, we're recommending ten additional bilingual resource teachers. This is something tangible that we can track and we can follow. Further, we call for the transparency of the district budget. It appears that there's a commingling of funds that have been allocated to English learners, low-income, foster youth, and it makes it very difficult to, impossible to trace expenditures with the funding source. In our meeting with the superintendent in December and budget staff, we urged that corrective action be taken, and a reflection on the budget shows that no corrective action has been taken.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Buenas noches. Good evening, Superintendent and members of the Board and other district personnel. My name is Dolores Delgado Campbell. I am a co-chair of the Education Committee of LULAC, which you've been told what it is. I speak tonight in support of the alternative budget presented by the Sacramento Community Priorities Coalition. We are a member of the Priorities Coalition, and we have met several times with the superintendent and the chief financial officer. We ask you to spend the funds that you receive from the state each year for the education of English-language learners. English-language learners in Sacramento schools need additional instructional assistance. Funds should be allocated to establish additional programs for English-language learner students in these schools with large numbers of English-language learners. In agreement with the coalition, we recommend the hiring of ten additional bilingual resource specialists. Many of these would be teachers that are already working in the district. They would need to be replaced in the classrooms by new teachers with recent preparation in English language development. Thank you. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Going to read the names of the folks who submitted comment cards. Just want to make sure we do this in order. Frank DeYoung, followed by Ian Lee, Kristin Van Der Sluus, Piper Van Der Sluus, and Lamonia Coleman.
Thank you. And can I just remind everyone to please remain at the two-minute limit since we had several light-minute, last-minute additions for our public comment?
Good evening. My name is Frank DeYoung, San Brandon Middle School. Good evening, Superintendent Aguilar, President Ryan, and the rest of the Board. I'm here to just say thank you. I want to thank Superintendent Aguilar for his vision and his leadership and his willing to take bold steps like summer school. I was here four years ago asking for summer school. I can't tell you how excited I am about that. It's a proactive move, which the district, from my viewpoint, hasn't been famous for being proactive. It's been more reactive, and I'm really looking forward to it. The fact that we're still funding after-school programs is important to me, and I think it's great. We're reaching out to the kids that really need it the most, and I want to say thank you for that. Board Member Hanson, I'd like to say thank you for San Brandon. They're doing a wonderful job there. My granddaughter has really blossomed there. They got a great leadership program. The teachers are motivated, and if you have a chance to go there and visit, I really wish you would. And I just would caution the Board that what we're doing is great, but we really need to be aware of doing lessons learned that mean, you know, nothing's going to be perfect. The challenge is going to be the, quote Superintendent Aguilar, and I won't get it perfect, culture-devour strategy. You're going to get complaints. People are going to be unhappy. But you know what? We're doing the right thing, and we need to stay strong and move forward. And I just want to say thank you again.
Thank you for those words of encouragement.
Good afternoon. My name is Ian Lee. I am a staff organizer with SEIU Local Ten Two One, the Classified Workers Union at Sac City Unified. As you may know, the city of Sacramento has one of the fastest-growing rent in the entire nation by percentage, and so as a result, that's making it hard for parents, for classified staff, and for other community members. And so, SEIU Local Ten Two One, along with other SEIU locals, have come together to put forth an initiative to try to stabilize rent in Sacramento, tying, hopefully tying rent increases to that of CPI. So, if the cost of living were to go up three percent, the rent would be maximized to be stabilized up to three percent. And so, I'm here to let you all know about that, and also to ask the public to sign these petitions. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Okay, we promise we'll be nice.
Hi, my name's Kristin Van Der Sluus, and I wanted to introduce my daughter. I'm extremely proud of her. She's a fourth grader. Her name is Piper, and she wanted to speak to the Board tonight and share with you a little bit about what it's been like to be a student in the school district here with learning disabilities.
Hi, Piper.
Hi, my name is Piper, and I'm ten years old, and I'm fourth grade, and I go to Caleb Greenwood Elementary, and I am a Gate student. And at my school, it's been pretty tough. The teachers are great and amazing, but I didn't get the help that I needed, and everyone did testing, and they said I didn't have learning disabilities. And then Lisa Pippin came in and did testing on me, and she's actually said that I did have three learning disabilities, dyslexia, dysgraphia, and dyscalculia. And we were sort of surprised that the district didn't find out that I had all of those learning disabilities, and it's, I was sometimes scared to go to school because I didn't feel like they could help me and that I could be successful. And I just wanted to say that hopefully everyone starts to recognize that people with learning disabilities have struggles in school and that they need lots of help.
Thank you, Piper. That was outstanding.
Thank you, and then I'm hoping to have two minutes as well.
So, can I just ask you, are you combining with the other students, or is it separate?
No, they just were standing up to support Piper. It's her first time saying anything of this nature.
Okay, if we can reset the clock.
Thank you. Proud of you. So proud of her. So, again, I'm Kristin Van Der Sluus, and thank you for letting us do public comments. I wanted to share a little bit about what it's been like to be a parent with a student with learning disabilities here in the district. And I would be speaking later under the Special Education Audit section, but unfortunately, the audit that was ordered by the district excluded learning disabilities. So, that was really, really surprising and disappointing, and it seemed indicative of what's been going on here, is that it feels as though learning disabilities are being ignored. And that's been really upsetting because it's the bread and butter of education when we look at students, how they read, and they write, and they spell, and they do math. So, it's not like we're asking for enrichment or extra programs. We really need to help these kids. So, for us, we had a miserable couple of years with fruitless meetings, and we learned the hard way that the school psychologists do not have the qualifications to diagnose learning disabilities, which is really frustrating because the individual with disabilities Education Act, federal law, requires that schools identify students for testing that are having struggles in class, and that they identify their learning disabilities, and then provide adequate, appropriate education services for those students. And this has been a really big failure. And so, unfortunately, it's become, it seems like it's this dirty secret at the district that they've just been ignored. We know that special education doesn't even use the word dyslexia, but this isn't something new. It's been around for thirty years, and we have all of those years of research that shows us what works for these students. shows us what works for these students. And what doesn't work is to ignore it, to blame what's going on with them on behavior. So we've got this bright child who was hiding under her desk all of a sudden in third grade, was failing every spelling test, was having all of these problems, which anyone who knows about learning disabilities knows it's what's called the third-grade wall that they hit, and it was so sad for us to see that no one at our wonderful school knew about the learning disabilities or could even diagnose them. So I just really want to encourage the Board of Education to look into this more, to not let this fall off of your radar, because it makes all the difference between these kids who get into this cycle of failure and are so discouraged and don't know how to succeed, and most of these kids drop out of high schools. So we would like to see you consider children with learning disabilities and to start providing evidence-based remediation. It really matters, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Lamia Coleman, and I'm a member of Sacramento Area Congressations Together. I'm also the mother of a William Land student. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Alternative Budget presented by the Community Priority Coalition, of whom we're a member. And I just wanted to lift up a couple of the things that really speak to what we are, what we've been working towards the SAC Act. First off, creating, creating a supportive school climate for all students does take people, it does take, like, learning, learning inside and learning kind of outwards. So towards that, we really support the recommendation for $3 million for onsite professional development to train teachers in culturally responsive learning, restorative practices, and classroom management, and the 12 high-needs schools. I think focusing around the high-needs schools is so important, because that's, from my experience subbing, because I'm also a sub in the district, the high-needs schools are, it's more challenging, and you need more, you need more tools, you need more self-awareness. We also really support the recommendation to reduce the SRO proportional to increase funding for restorative practices by hiring the six onsite and onsite restorative practice specialists. That, that help that you can access all the time, you can go to to talk to, you can send a kid to, and the kid in my class today said, "I want to kill myself." The, we also, we know that our English language learner students and our parents, they need more resources, and so the hiring of 10 bilingual resource specialists is also really important. And then the last thing I, very quickly, is, is the reducing classroom size in the schools that really have the need. So many of these things address similar things as the Graduation Task Force recommendations, and also the goals of the LCAP.
Thank you so much, we appreciate your time tonight. And we have no more public comments. Moving on to a public hearing, item 9.1, Public Hearing on the Approval of the 2016-17 CAFS Proportionment Waiver requested by Yav Pemshuab Academy.
Good evening, President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, and members of the Board. The purpose of this public hearing is to request a waiver for Yav Pemshuab Academy. The certification deadline of March 1, 2018, to submit apportionment for the 2016-17 CAFS report was missed due to a key staff being sick. Perceived guidelines, certified reports, postmarked after March 1, 2018, cannot process for payment with our waiver approved by the State Board of Education. Under code, charter schools cannot submit a general waiver. Authorizing districts need to submit waivers on the charter's behalf. By filing this waiver and upon approval from the California Department of Education, Yav Pemshuab Academy will be entitled to $1,069. Superintendent Lee Yaw and Chief Financial Officer Megan Lau from the Urban Charter Schools are in the audience if there are any specific questions. So this is just, this is not very, doesn't happen often enough, but we are doing it in behalf of the charter school because they are requested.
Do we have any questions from Board members? We have one Board member question from Vice President Wu.
Thank you, so I see that the benefit to Yav Pemshuab, if we grant them the waiver, is there a disbenefit to the district?
No at all.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure of, thank you.
Thank you for clarification, this is an item for information only, it looks like we don't have any other Board member questions at this time. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Heraldo, we appreciate your time. Moving on to item 10.0, Board Workshop Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives, 10.1, which is Arts Education Update, which will be presented tonight by Dr. Taylor, Matt Turkey, and some of our community partners.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, and members of the Board. My name is Iris Taylor, and I'm the Chief Academic Officer, and I'm joined tonight by this team here who will share with you an art, an update on arts education in the district. So we have with us tonight Matt Turkey, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, and from Clara, we have Emily, Emily Dans and Megan Wright, and so we're excited to share with you what's been happening with that partnership.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
So tonight's focus, we'll just give you a brief background around just what the vision is for arts education in the district and how that connects to our guiding principle, and then just what's some of the arts programming that's already, that's in the district currently. We'll hear from our key partner from Clara, and then we'll also share with you some updates on some other partnerships that we have going on in the district, and end with next steps. Our guiding principle calls for us, for all students to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the widest array of options. We know from research that arts plays a pivotal role in order for that to happen. We know that arts, the skills and strategies that students learn through the arts are the same types of thinking that benefit them in academic areas. We also know that the arts is extremely important for engaging our students and keeping them interested in school. So in Sac City, what we're seeking is for every student to have a range of arts experiences while they're with us. And currently, we have in the district a focus on curricular arts, arts integration, and arts enhancement. With curricular arts, what we're really looking at is at the secondary level, where our students are able to take courses in music, dance, theater, visual and performing arts, and those courses are taught by a certificated teacher, and they occur during the school day. Arts integration, and you'll hear about some of that from our partners, is where we're really trying to help students gain a deep understanding of an arts area, but as well in the integration within a curricular area. So standards are taught as well as an art form. And then finally, there's a focus on arts enhancement, where students are using the arts, are learning about the arts, as a vehicle for understanding a curricular area. So we want to give quite a bit of time over to our arts partnership through Clara, so I'm going to turn it over to Emily and Megan.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. My name's Megan Weigant, and I'm the Executive Director of Clara, which is the nonprofit that operates the former Fremont School in Midtown Sacramento. We have a dual mission to promote arts education and long-term sustainability for arts organizations through collaborative community partnerships, and the greatest example of that is quite simply through the district's donation of the school, we now have seven arts organizations that are in residence in that building. The dollar value of the rent that they pay is directly tied to the expenses of maintaining and operating the building, and that's about a third of market value in Midtown. The rest of the rent that they pay is in-kind. Arts education programs in the district offer to the schools and the students at no cost. In the original contract, the district asked Clara tenants to provide four different types of arts access: scholarships to classes at Clara, tickets to any tenant performances at the CCT, a performing arts summer camp, and work-based learning internships. When we sat down to figure out what that actually looked like, it quickly became clear that there were a lot of moving parts and a lot of conflicting needs and goals. So with the help of the Sacramento Region Community Foundation, we were able to engage an arts education consultant with the directive to create a cohesive, strategic arts education outreach program for Clara and its seven arts partners in service to the district. This plan started with all parties going through a strengths and needs assessment, and concluded with specific programming deliverables for each arts organization based on what we learned. It also included a roadmap for how Clara would identify its target schools, program evaluation models, and a funding pipeline for Clara to identify and develop the internal resources that we needed to be successful in these goals. One of the key resources required and funded by this plan was the ability to hire an education outreach director, to work with individual tenants, to build and shape education programs that were standard-aligned and constantly improving. And we were lucky that Emily Dans, the same strategic planning consultant who helped us develop the plan in the first place, agreed to join us to bring that plan to full fruition. So I'm going to turn this over to Emily, who will talk about how that strategic plan for Clara has translated to creating more value for the district and also for the arts organizations.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to share with you the progress that we have made at Clara in providing arts education for students in Sac City. I'm excited to share with you some of the impact that we have had and some of the growth that we've had as well. As Megan mentioned, when I began working on the strategic plan two years ago, my first question to the Board at Clara was, do you want to simply meet the lease agreement minimum requirements, or do you want to maximize the impact of this never-before-seen partnership between a school district and seven different arts and culture organizations? We have an opportunity to provide robust, intentional, high-quality programming to as many students as possible, but in order to do that, we have to have a strategic plan and someone to lead that. As you will see in the outcomes that I will share with you, the Board luckily chose the latter option, and we've been able to really maximize far beyond what the lease requirements were. When I looked at the lease agreement and saw these four categories, my first concern was that all four of these outreach methods share one significant barrier to access, and that is transportation. As you'll see, all four of these require students to come to the Clara facility, which, as wonderful as that is, we also need to find ways to serve more students than those who could possibly get physically there. So the first change that I made is in addition to adding in in-school artist residencies, where we take the artists at Clara and bring them into the school site, so a single artist can serve 30 students in a classroom. That was the, that was the big pivotal change for us and what we've really capitalized on this year. And I want to just show you some of the measurements and data of what we were able to accomplish this year. Had the Board voted to stick with the minimum requirements of the lease, that is the numbers that you will see in this chart in blue, we would have served around 65 students with 1,000 hours of instruction with a total value of approximately $40,000. However, by investing in this strategic plan and building the support and systems needed to maximize the potential of arts organizations in our community, Clara has now served this past year 1,500 students with over 6,500 hours of instruction at a value of over $200,000. This is all at no cost to the district and with minimal burden on any one arts organization. The programs this year included 32 in-school artist residencies in Sac City, in Sac City Elementary, Middle Schools, and High Schools, five performing arts assemblies, 720 tickets to the Sacramento Ballet and Capitol Stage, $20,000 in scholarships for students to the Sacramento Ballet, a two-week summer camp for 50 students, and 10 full-time, year-round internships. Since the strategic plan integrated process and outcome evaluation, we are also able to show you the results of those programs. Through pre-imposed surveys, interviews, and observation, students have expressed deeper appreciation and understanding of the arts, greater understanding of arts-related careers, and improved confidence and leadership skills. Parents and teachers have also reported deeper engagement during classroom learning, better communication at home, and a stronger understanding of social and cross-cultural differences. It is my hope that we can build on this model and scale the design to serve every student in Sac City Unified School District, leveraging the diverse culturally-rich network of teaching artists and arts partners in the city to provide artist residencies and in-depth, meaningful arts experiences across the district. We look forward to expanding our partnership to further support Superintendent Aguilar's commitment to arts education for every student. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Good evening, members of the Board and Superintendent. Thank you Megan and Emily for your update on the amazing work which Clara is doing. I'm now going to update the Board on the work of two of our other partners, Any Given Child and LinkUp. Any Given Child is a collaboration between the arts community and the district focused on bringing arts education during the school day to K through eighth-grade students. Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission works together with the district to provide three vital components of arts education to our schools. Firstly, arts exposure experiences in the form of assemblies for the entire school population, led by arts groups such as B Street Theater, Kaladanza Dance Company, Sacramento Ballet, and Sacramento Taiko Dan. Secondly, teaching artist residencies, which are a collaboration in arts integration between professional artists and teachers. Students are provided with six hours of high-quality arts integration with their teacher and a professional artist in the classroom. Theme-based residencies focus on learning objectives in the artist's art form, including dance, theater, music, and literary and visual arts. And lastly, the Kennedy Center vets presenters who provide professional learning in classroom, for classroom teachers with hands-on workshops on how to bring arts into the classroom. In 2017-18, Any Given Child provided 30 assemblies to nearly 8,000 students in Sacramento City Schools, 21 artist residencies in elementary-grade classrooms in five Sacramento City Schools, and three-hour professional development workshops for 50 Sacramento teachers and administrators. The next partner we're going to highlight tonight is LinkUp. LinkUp is a national partnership, partnership with Carnegie Hall's Whale Music Institute and the Sacramento Philharmonic and Opera to engage local students and teachers in musical learning and exploration. Elementary students in grades three through six across the region are given the opportunity to sing and play an instrument in the classroom. In the spring, all participants then perform with a professional orchestra, the SAC Philharmonic and Opera, in a culminating concert. This year, the district had over 1,000 students from seven schools receive their own instrument, a soprano recorder, and learn to play it in their classes. Teachers were trained by a LinkUp partner and professional musician, Julian Dixon, who is here tonight. Musicians from SAC Philharmonic and Opera visited classrooms to help instruct our students, and on April the 27th, our students participated in a culinating concert with SAC Philharmonic and Opera at the Sacramento Community Center Theater.
So to close this, our presentation tonight, we really want to thank our partners from Clara, and we also want to thank other partners who are in the audience with us tonight. We recently met with Steve Winlock, Dr. Steve Winlock from SCOE, Sacramento County Office of Education, and Dennis Manger from the Mayor's Office, who really expressed an interest in working with us in a regional arts consortium, a regional arts partnership, and so we're very excited about the numerous partners who are interested in working with the district around the arts. Moving forward, we've also, the Superintendent previously announced a district-wide arts initiative that we are currently planning for, so that our elementary school students who we know traditionally are underserved with the arts will have arts experiences next school year. So we're looking forward to the strategic planning and partnership from our arts community. And I just want to acknowledge, by just waving your hand, those of you who are with us tonight.
Very much.
So we'll take questions.
We appreciate your time.
We appreciate your presentation, Dr. Taylor. So before we take questions from the board members, do we have public comments?
Yes, we have six public comments, if you could line up in order, please. Azariah Smith, Diego Campos, Melissa Saroni, Dr. Stephen Winlock, Dennis Mangers, and Julian Dixon.
Thank you.
My name is Azariah Smith, and I am a freshman at Luther Burbank High School and had the opportunity to work with Clara this semester as a part of my English class. Our class was first introduced to 916, Inc., an organization that brought us writing workshops and tools to create poems that would eventually be presented and published in our very own book. Clara then brought professional theater teaching artist Gail Dartes from Capitol Stage to work with me and my fellow classmates to bring our poetry to life on stage. During our 10 classes with Gail, we explored different interpretations of our written work and had the opportunity to see our pieces performed by each other in the class. We learned about diction, projection, storytelling, character development, and blocking. At the end of the unit, we took a field trip to Capitol Stage Theater where we performed our poetry in front of a live audience and celebrated the release of our published book. The experience truly brought English to life and opened me up to a world of artistic possibilities. I learned to take risks and overcomes my fear, found new ways to express myself and my feelings, and felt so proud that I have developed the confidence to successfully perform on a real stage. Through this theater class, I developed a renewed interest in my English learning. It gave me a better appreciation and understanding of writing, the importance of carefully chosen words. It made me excited to explore other forms of writing and how they could be performed. And it gave me a voice I didn't know I had within me. I would like to conclude a shared poem from Mr. McAnley's class from a student. "The heart betrays you as if it didn't know you and I would get broken in pieces. Even though it might not be intentional, it keeps going. The heart is like the morgue you get broken into a million little pieces, more the desire it has to love and expect love back. Lies have been told, but the lesson has not been learned. The lesson can be taught 100 times, but it doesn't stop trying to love till you're completely cold-hearted. The heart can be selfish, everyone else can be too. Appreciate what you've been given as much as you can. Appreciate your heart to the maximum, since it will be the only thing that you will have at the end of the day." I am so appreciative of this opportunity and hope students like me can continue to have these experiences in our school day.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Very good.
My name is Diego Campos. I am a performing artist, choreographer, and movement educator here in Sacramento. I am here on behalf of the many teaching artists that are eager to work in the school district. I have been given the opportunity to be part of Clara and serve as a teaching artist and artistic collaborator for the past two years. This year, I was able to present and create a pilot for Clara's first professional artistic residency, in which three outstanding local artists received 16 hours of rehearsal space in exchange for 10 teaching hours in their area of expertise at Willsey Wood Middle School. Such artists were able to share their talent and passion for a combined total of 30 hours with over 150 students through hands-on instruction and creative exposure to the performing arts. This extraordinary residency was made possible and highly successful thanks to Clara's accessible teaching model, careful planning, and well-defined structure, which allowed for a very diverse range of talented teaching artists to provide a standards-aligned arts program. Let us remember that, as educators, we are responsible for shaping a bright future for our youth, a future filled with knowledge, with opportunity, and many available options to achieve success. This bright future can be even brighter if thousands of students continue to become the recipients of the great educational efforts of this wonderful organization and its partnership with the Sacramento City Unified School District. Despite the financial or circumstantial challenges facing our educational system, I truly believe that Clara's contributions to arts and education, along with the talent of our local artists and your support, will continue to play a critical role in shaping and developing the success of our youth and our society for many years to come.
Thank you so much.
My name is Melissa Saron, and I am happy to be here on behalf of the Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission's Arts Education Program for this discussion on arts in the district. And I'm also here as a proud Sac City Unified parent. My son, who is graduating from college in one week, was exposed to foundational and diverse art experiences, both in the classroom and on field trips in Sacramento City Unified Schools. As the Arts Commission celebrates 10 years of providing our Any Given Child program to Sacramento, I'm gratified by the reach we've had. Our assemblies bring a variety of performance experiences to entire school populations, exposing students to professional artists who not only show their art form, but put it in context for young audiences. Our residencies bring teaching artists into the classroom, allowing teachers and artists to work side by side as they create meaningful experiences that make learning come to life. And we offer professional development workshops for hundreds of teachers each year, providing them with the tools to incorporate the arts into all classroom subjects. Teachers tell us time and again that what they appreciate about this program is that it captures all children so that none are left behind. It piques their curiosity, it helps them to explore new talents and interests, and it gets them to think about their world in unexpected ways. We will continue to reinforce your goal of ensuring that every student receives a variety of arts experiences every year. Any Given Child is just one of many great tools in the vibrant and inspired toolbox we call the arts. And we greatly value our partnership with Sacramento City Unified School District and look forward to working together to strengthen and deepen the arts in all of our schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. President Ryan, members of the board, Superintendent Aguilar, Dennis Mangers, I have the great honor to represent Mayor Steinberg this evening, and I have a further great honor to advise him on matters around arts, culture, and the creative economy. And I'm here with my colleague, Dr. Winlock, to give you a brief report on what is transpiring here at the invitation of the superintendent. The mayor asked me to provide him with an inventory of the city's cultural and artistic assets, which I did. And as he looked at them and realized the enormity of the investment that we've already made, not only already made, but the investments we are planning over the next couple of years, coupled with our observation of the graying of the audiences in our galleries and performance venues, to which I contribute, of course, it became very clear to the mayor that we were going to have to develop a relationship with the schools surrounding our city with regard to arts education, or we would not have a new generation coming in to be participants in the creative economy, audiences, or donors to our arts and culture activities. And so he called Superintendent Dave Gordon from the county, and who then assembled the 13 school districts of the county. And he proposed that we form a consortium of the city, all of the school districts, in the county, the county superintendent of schools, and two partners that have now joined us, the Sacramento Region Community Foundation and the nonprofit Friends of SMAC, which have agreed to finance our effort. Essentially, what we have in mind over the next several years is to form a partnership that will ultimately lead to a reinvigoration of arts education in the school districts in and around our city, for the reasons I've suggested before. So the mayor is in, wants me to tell you, we've already raised a considerable amount of money to be helpful in this regard for the city's share of this effort, and Dr. Winlock is going to tell you a little bit about how it's going to work.
Thank you so much, Dennis. We appreciate your efforts.
My pleasure. Did your two minutes. Great. Thank you. I'm Dr. Winlock with the Sacramento County Office of Education, and also I serve as an arts commissioner for the Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission. And I'm very excited about this opportunity for us to join forces, as Mr. Mangers kind of shared, all of the partners coming together to make sure that we are together supporting art education in the region. It's always been a goal, in a lot of ways, from all of our districts, in looking at making sure that every kid has art every day. So the work of the consortium is going to be that we're going to work together to support the art education implementation that happens in all of our school districts. We're going to be looking with them to see, how can we support, as a consortium and in this group together, to actually make sure that we're dealing with the curriculum, the implementation, supporting school districts in the way that they need to be supported in the implementation of art education. You know, examples are going to, each of our districts are going to be developing a strategic plan for the implementation of art education. Each of our districts, we're going to be identifying obstacles that are in education. For instance, transportation is a huge issue for all of our districts to get our students to the exposure. We're going to be working as a consortium to look at, how do we help our districts in doing that? The consortium also has an arm, which is going to develop the resources, which is through our Friends of SMAC. Those dollars will be used to actually help deal with those areas that are looking at our districts. We're asking all of our districts, we're supporting them in the issue about making sure there's a VAPA coordinator in every district. And we know that some districts, how we need to support them in making that happen, will be a part of the work of the consortium. But the whole focus is to support art education for every student throughout all of our districts in this region.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Julian Dixon. I'm with the Sacramento Philharmonic and Opera. I'm the senior director of the community engagement and education. I'm also a tuba player. And we are standing here saying that we are a committed, dedicated partner as a performing arts organization. We've been here for over a decade, working with you and bringing arts and music experiences into the school. LinkUp is, we're going into our ninth year, and we had over, as Mr. Turkey said, we had over 1,000 of your students participating. Well, this year, we're bringing LinkUp at a key time where we're ready to expand, to hopefully reach out to about 9,000 students by adding two more shows. And by us, and it comes from this committed and passion partnership that we have from our board, to our staff, to our musicians. Many of our musicians started off in school in music, in the elementary school, and we understand that, the impact of having arts and music at an early age, and how it brings our donors, our musicians, our patrons, our audiences. And in working with the school district, having, understanding that transportation has a role, the food services has a role, your VAPA coordinators are key to help coordinating the logistics, we're committed to linking your students to an experience downtown in the community center theater to get out of the classroom. And we're working with your classroom teachers over throughout the year. And that culminating experience is the energy, I think, that we're trying to show the rest of community what arts and music can ignite and fuel change and in turn create the support that we need for the arts. I want to thank you for this ongoing relationship, and Sacramento Philharmonic and Opera, we're partners forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments at this time?
No other public comments.
Okay, with that, we're going to go ahead and take board member comments. First comment is from board member Pritchett.
Thank you, President Ryan, and I just wanted to thank everyone that came out here tonight to support the arts. You guys are doing great work in our communities, and having two children that have gone through Sac City when they were exposed to arts, I really saw them blossom. Well, my son blossomed when I talked football terms with them, but my daughter, she blossomed when she was exposed to the arts. In fact, I still remember her struggling in math, and when she got to junior high, she got into the band. And as soon as she started band, first, I would say, within the first couple months of learning to play an instrument, her math grade just exceeded, not exceeded, excelled. But thank you for the work that you're doing. I do have a couple of questions for Emily. Emily, so as you probably know, Sac City is a very large district, and I just wanted to first congratulate you on reaching so many kids in our communities. I wanted to know, you probably don't know off the top of your head, but do you know if the, I don't have the number in front of me, was it 1,700 students that you've reached? Do you know if they've come from all over the district? Because, you know, we have schools that are in the city of Rancho Cudavah, we have schools that are very far south, and I'm just curious where those students came from.
Yeah, that's a great question. One of the strategies that I put in place was, knowing that we had limited resources and a limited budget, we identified three target schools, an elementary school, a middle school, and a high school. The original vision was that that would be a pipeline, so that students TK through 12 could experience Clara programming throughout their whole experience in Sac City. So we have concentrated our efforts into three specific school sites, and then begun to expand beyond that as our resources allow. So we started with Hollywood Park Elementary. Every single student at Hollywood Park has received a 10-week artist residency as a minimum. Some of them have received 20 weeks as well. The idea is that that will be a long-term commitment, so every year kindergarten is paired with the ballet, first grade is paired with the Brazilian Center, and so every kid goes through a different discipline each year. As Diego mentioned, Willsey Wood is where we are putting our, kind of branching out with other artist residencies beyond our Clara tenants. That is where we are bringing additional artist residency programs. And then we're also working at Luther Burbank High School, so you heard from Azariah, where we've done some programming there. We are also expanding, this year we are offering our summer camp to Elder Creek Elementary. So we are starting to expand, we're hoping to shift in that pipeline from Elder Creek to Willsey Wood to Hiram Johnson. So we are keeping it small and intentional at this point to maximize the resources that we have and to give students not a dabbling here or there, but a really concentrated effort of what we can provide. I have started to explore, it was fun to see Ellen Lee here tonight, we have worked with William Land on exploring some other ideas of expansion, but I really intentionally paused that because I realized that before Clara grows, we really need to see how we fit into a strategic plan among the district. And so while our work that we're doing is hitting a few schools, I would really like to make sure that the work we grow to doing is the correct and thoughtful expansion, so that we can increase that access and equity for students.
Okay, thank you for answering that. As you see potential and you see growth, I would like to recommend that you reach out to the city of Rancho Cudavah, because they have grant funding through their Measure H funding, and the superintendent and I sit in two-by-two meetings with their city council, and they're always talking about that they have money that they've sent to some of our school sites, and so possibly it may be a program like this, or it could be incorporated into the arts.
Great, thank you.
And I'd be happy to connect you there.
It would be fantastic.
My other question is, as far as the impact that you guys have on the community, how does Clara measure the impact?
So to balance out my artistic side, I'm also a major data nerd, and I really enjoy data, and I think that it is massively important that we figure out how we're going to measure the impact and outcomes through arts education. I think otherwise, we're going to lose the momentum that we luckily have in the city right now. And it's my hope that when we build a strategic plan in the district, that that is very much integrated with a really thoughtful evaluation program, that is different, that is beyond the academic evaluation and the attendance evaluation, but also looking at social and emotional learning and growth. So what we've done at Clara is, within each program, we have a really specific guideline of evaluation that we use, and we've been really lucky this year to actually contract with an outside evaluation consultant, who has really helped us in streamlining and fine-tuning, again, because we are a staff of two and have limited capacity, making sure that the evaluation that we're doing, which can become very time-consuming and collecting so much data, is the intentional, specific data that we actually want to be collecting, and then really looking at how do we then share and communicate that data to the public.
And do you, the list that you have here, do you measure the impact of each of these, or is it?
Yeah, so we have some overarching tools of measurement, but then within each of those five buckets of programming, there is really specific designated evaluation methods that go with each of those, that differ between each group.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, you're welcome.
Looks like we have a question from Board Member, Second Vice President Minnick.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a super exciting presentation, this has got me kind of fired up. I'm just getting a little anxious trying to figure out how we can make this happen for, you know, 45,000 kids. I did want to point out just a couple things that, well, one thing specifically that got me excited on Slide 12 or Page 12, where we talked about the Clara's impact, and it said 69% of students expressed a greater understanding of arts-related career opportunities. And like, that was huge to me. So I'm a musician, I've been a musician since I was in eighth grade, maybe seventh grade, and no one ever talks to me about the options of careers in the arts. So I thought my only option was to be a rock star, and so I became a not-successful rock star. So, I was going to say failed rock star, but I thought not-successful was a little... So that grabbed me because I think that a lot of people don't realize that there's so many things beyond what you just see on TV, that, you know, careers in the arts. And so I found that really exciting. One of the questions I had, there was, is this Clara, I believe, or Any Given Child? It references the professional development workshops for 50 teachers in the district that occurred this school year. And so I wanted to know who those teachers are, not a list of names, but like, you know, are they teachers who teach in the arts, are they, were they specifically recruited for this? How did that process go, and who were those people?
So, communication went out to principals, who then spread the communication out through teachers, of teachers who wanted to come and participate, could come and participate.
And they could have been teaching any grade level or any subject, or was it specific?
Actually, most of them weren't art teachers. That was the exciting thing about it, because it's arts integration. It was teachers from all different disciplines, all different backgrounds, who wanted to incorporate the arts to help them be better teachers. So it was really cool.
Beautiful.
Very cool. So yeah, that's, so again, that's exciting because, you know, as a, again, as a kid who, you know, loved the arts, you know, if that had been part of all the other, you know, academics that I was doing as a kid, it would have, you know, gotten me a lot more engaged in my, in my learning. And then my other, I guess, question, so this, this model that, you know, specifically around what Clara's doing to provide support, and then, and even as we look at this collaborative with all these, all these organizations, and I know we're talking about a strategic plan and how to scale this big, given the model that you're using right now, how realistic is it to expand that in the, in kind of the structure that exists, you know, right now?
Yes, that, so, the great thing is, I think the district is experiencing a lot of the same challenges that Clara faced in terms of, we have very limited budget, very limited staff. It's really exciting to know that a VAPA coordinator is, is joining the team in the district and anticipating that that single staff member is going to need a lot of support. One of the reasons I think that Clara's model has been successful and why I think that it could absolutely be scaled, is that it is leveraging the vast, huge community of arts organizations, independent teaching artists that we have. And it's identified that an artist is not necessarily a teaching artist, and so part of this model includes training for artists to become successful teaching artists. I think a lot of that can be done by using the skills of classroom teachers and using a model where the two of them are actually teaching each other, where classroom teachers are helping teaching artists learn classroom management skills, learning how to align their content to standards. And teaching artists can help classroom teachers to become more comfortable with actually integrating the arts and providing that content that they need. I know that the VAPA standards are also going through a shift right now in California, and I think there's going to need to be a lot of support for artists to support teachers in integrating these new standards, which are, give a little more flexibility and freedom, but need that content support. So I think, given that we have these similar parallel challenges that we have faced and we have managed to overcome in this scale, I think that, especially with the support of the mayor and the consortium, we now have a community of resources that are all being focused. The timing of this is so exciting, because I think the resources are here to leverage all of that and build this plan.
Awesome. Sounds like you've got a lot of, a lot of folks behind you, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Minnick. Board Member Hanson.
Thank you very much. I basically just wanted to make a comment, one, you know, pile on and just say thank you for all the great work. I was one of the board members who helped write the agreement for the facility, and I'm glad that you've gone above and beyond serving our students. That's really wonderful. I also hope that Mr. Mangers will take to the, to the mayor, you know, that there's a lot of arts going on. I know he's looking forward to seeing that happening, and the district is absolutely a partner in that. And I think the more he understands the things that are happening, you know, he should be really excited that he's part of a great, a great movement. One thing I want to make sure everyone remembers is the school district has contributed several millions of dollars for the success of this program. It's often not recognized, but the facility that we've leased on a long-term basis is worth several million dollars a year, and that's often overlooked. So I do want my fellow board members just to recognize that we own the building, we did an unprecedented 40-year lease, and we estimated that that was a value of almost $20 million to the program. So I think that's a kind of a gentle reminder that, it's not usually in presentations and we kind of get overlooked, but the school district is absolutely a partner in this. We're in it for the long haul. You know, we were very excited when we negotiated the agreement, and I think it's really exceeded expectations, and I think it's a really bright future for our students. I think that's something that's really important, and just wanted to say thanks and keep up the great work.
Thank you, Board Member Hanson. Vice President Wu.
Thank you, President Ryan. I wanted to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, and I remember that $1 a year lease, and I was thinking about having a fundraiser that year to help raise the $40 for the lease for Clara. But I am so gratified that the program has been such a success, and I've been around to the various schools and seen the programs. I've been down to Clara to see the end of the summer programs, and it's just phenomenal what the kids can do. And I was hoping, when Dennis Mangers came up here, that he was going to bless us with a song, but apparently he's not going to do it today. But welcome, Dennis, thank you for coming. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice President Wu. I have a few comments and reflections. First, you know, I want to thank everyone who presented tonight, in particular Megan Wiegand and Emily Downs, for your tireless efforts. I think that Board Member Hanson spoke to the unprecedented nature of the partnership between Sac City Unified, the city of Sacramento, and our struggling arts nonprofit community in providing a home for them in one of our closed school sites. At the time, we had a very loose agreement around $1 a year in exchange for educational benefits. I've been very blessed since joining the board to get to serve as a liaison with that agreement, and I will say that Clara has leaned in in a big way. They could have, as Emily shared, done the bare minimum, which is to serve, you know, fewer than 100 students, and provide some tickets, and not necessarily be strategic in how you scale that model for the benefit of thousands of students across the district. But we were able to, without using district funds, fundraise for Emily's position, be able to hire a position housed within the nonprofit, that as you have seen, has brought more than $200,000 of value to our arts education work in the district, and this year alone, and served close to 2,000 students. You know, I have a vision for being able to continue to leverage that type of partnership and resources to meet the needs of 43,000 students across the district. I think you know for me that this is very personal. Growing up in poverty, I probably would have dropped out of school had it not been for the access that I had to a high-quality arts education at a very young age. I went to eight schools between kindergarten and high school, and quite often my life was unstable and didn't have a lot of beauty in it. And for me, my music, my choir, my theater, that gave me a reason to get up every morning, a reason to come to school, a reason to hope. And so this idea that it is not value-added but essential to academics for our students is ingrained in me. I would like to ask the question, because you talked about the teaching artists and the artists in residency, and I know that we now have a VAPA coordinator position that we're hiring, but arguably, I've seen this position in the past, they are vastly under-resourced, they are charged with myriad duties, and it is very difficult to build and grow the work in the way we would hope with that position alone. How can we better utilize the partnership between Clara and our VAPA coordinator to bring arts education to students throughout the district?
So I'd like to take this opportunity, actually, to introduce Mr. Gary Courtney, who is just over here. Gary has accepted the position of VAPA coordinator in the district, so we're very happy about that, and because as you can see, things are primed, really, here in Sacramento City to move forward with the strategic plan and a partnership between ourselves and our partners, and Mr. Courtney is going to be integral to doing that, I believe.
Congratulations, Gary, I appreciate it. I'd love to hear a response from Emily. I think one of the things that I am cognizant of is that you are going to be charged with an enormous task in the coming months, and to the extent that we can work in partnership with Emily and Clara, given that she has done a pretty extensive landscape analysis and has served as our liaison with some of our arts partners groups, I would love to see that partnership continue to grow and help inform your work.
Thank you, and yes, Gary, congratulations, it's exciting to have you here. My hope in terms of what Clara's relationship can look like with the district moving forward, I think one of the things, the way I've seen my role with Clara is providing a bridge, a bridge between teaching artists and the professional development they need, providing a bridge between the cultural and arts organizations at Clara and the school, but also being able to speak the language of the teachers and the educators and understand how we can creatively combine artists and teachers in the classroom. My suggestion is that we do a really, a really deep audit of the needs of the school district, the needs of every single school, as well as the resources that we have already. I think with the consortium and the momentum behind that, I think we also need to do an audit of, a really specific data-collecting audit of the community arts organizations and independent teaching artists that are available to us and can be resources. And I think it is a, it is a puzzle piece between identifying the needs of the district, identifying the resources available to us, above and beyond certificated arts teachers, which I think has to be part of that program, but I understand that that is not a massive area of growth that we can take right now, given the budget. And it's those two pieces that need to then come together, and, and we need to build that. I think there needs to be some time really spent collecting that data so that whatever decisions are made to grow and go into that strategic plan are informed by the data that we collect there. I think also along with that, at the same time of building that strategic plan, we have to be building evaluation that goes with that, so that we can come back to our community and show the impact that we are having and the change that we are making. I absolutely think this is possible. You are also right that having, Gary has a big job ahead of him, and it's a, it's, there's a lot to be done with a district of this size. It is my hope that Clara can be a significant source of support for the VAPA coordinator, both as the bridge between the district and the consortium, and helping to represent Sac City with the mayor's efforts and the community efforts, as well as being the lead support and help in building that strategic plan and conducting the audit that we need to do, both in the district and the community.
Thank you so much, Emily, we appreciate it, and we appreciate all of your energy tonight. And I do want to say, we have before us a 2020 commitment of a parcel tax in which arts education will play a huge role, and so I would like to see a significant amount of work and leveraging of resources prior to that, but that also can be a wonderful opportunity for us to ensure that every child has access to a culturally relevant, high-quality arts curriculum. Thank you.
So we're moving on to our next item, Item 10.2, which is the Special Education Audit Update.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor, please go ahead.
So, good evening, Board President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, members of the board. My name is Iris Taylor, I'm the Chief Academic Officer, and for this presentation, I'm joined by Becky Bryan, our Director of Special Education, and our SALPA Director. We're here to provide you with an update on special education, and more specifically, to share with you the work that has been underway this school year and its relationship to the recommendations that were made in the audit that was performed by the Council of the Great City Schools. So what we want to focus on tonight is really this driving question. This question of how can we better serve our students with disabilities? And it's a question that undergirds the work that is underway, as well as what prompted the review by the council in the first place. It's just a recognition that, you know, the performance of our students in a host of areas, a host of key areas, was not sufficient, and that we needed to take a look at the system as a whole to determine what should be our next steps, and what could we do to improve upon the outcomes for our students with disabilities. So tonight, we really want to slow down. We're going to introduce to you some things that you've seen in previous board presentations, but we want to slow this presentation down a bit and really emphasize what do these things mean for our student, for our work as a staff and as a district to support students with disabilities? So this statement around every system is perfectly designed to get the results that it gets. What does that mean for our students with disabilities, especially when we can see from a number of indicators, almost every indicator that you put in front of us, whether it's academics, whether it's social-emotional well-being, whether it's graduation A through G, in all of these areas, our students with disabilities are underperforming. We can see this at the district level, we can see this at the state level, we can see it at the national level. Our core value, again, recognizing that the system is not, it's doing exactly what it's designed to do, and if we want to have different outcomes, then we have to vigilantly work to change the system and to disrupt the inequities that we see. And then finally, you just saw this in the previous board presentation, this guiding principle that has been our North Star, our vision for our students, and that we want all of our students, our students with disabilities inclusive, to have an equal opportunity to graduate from Sac City with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the widest array of options. So we're going to give you some specific examples of what does that look like in our work, and what's been our effort underway to support our students with disabilities to achieve this. Some of the things that you will hear about are activities, initiatives, that have been in previous board presentations. For example, the work around improving graduation rates through our credit recovery, our master scheduling work that has been very intentional about master scheduling students for the upcoming school year, the athletics program, the VAPA initiatives that you just heard about, our graduation task force, and most recently, our expanded learning summer program. So again, we're going to slow this down and really dive into these recommendations and how the work that has been underway is, I would call it the beginning stages of addressing So to do this, we need to bring back to your attention these three definition, definitional points around equity, access, and social justice, and it's really... points around equity, access, and social justice, and it's really exciting that in the recommendations of the council, there is great alignment between this definition of equity, access, and social justice and the recommendations that the council made. So, this first one about displaying data in real time, so that it triggers a moral call to action, so that the actions that we put in place will serve all of our students and that our parents or our students whose families may not know how to navigate the system are not disadvantaged. We have over 6,000 students with disabilities in this district, and we want to make sure that all of them are able to benefit from what we put in place. This idea of checks and balances, and looking at our practices and our procedures for how they are disadvantaging students, so that we can change them. And then finally, this idea of looking at respecting the value of data and using our data as a means of continuous improvement and accountability, using it as accountability framework, and more importantly, that as we're looking at data, we recognize that behind every number is a child. But to do that, we're going to bring some children into the room, okay? So, we have these two students, and unfortunately, because of FERPA laws, you know, we can't show the students' faces, but these are two instances of students that you will see threaded within the presentation. One is a student in grade five, the second is a student in grade 11. To really call out this idea of by student, by name, by need, by inequity, and injustice. So, the Council of the Great City Schools conducted a review, they came in last November, and when they came to the district, they were very explicit in saying, you know, yes, you can commission us to do a special education review, but please recognize that we're going to take a look at the entire system, because the challenges that you're seeing in special education are not just about special education, they're about the system as a whole. They issued a final report last May and outlined 10 recommendations. Within that period between May and August, as you all know, Superintendent Aguilar joined the team, and I would say that it was a fortuitous pick, and that, again, the council said we're looking at the system as a whole. Superintendent Aguilar came with a very, very much a systems perspective, and also belief in the value of data to help us see the system and the results that it's producing, so that the initiatives and changes that we put in place were more, are more strategic. So, we're going to take this through you, recommendation by recommendation. The first recommendation that the council made was to develop a multi-tiered system of supports, an MTSS, and they outlined about seven points in the development of multi-tiered system of supports. One that we have been heavily emphasizing this year is 1F in the report, which is about data analysis and about establishing an early warning system, ensuring that we have some key performance indicators that we are using, and that those performance indicators are at the elementary, the middle school, and the secondary level, and that we have some strong ways of collecting information from, around those key indicators. I spoke about the alignment, right, with the equity, access, and social justice, those definitions. This particular recommendation is very much aligned to that third principle around respecting the value of data and establishing continuous improvement and account, a continuous improvement and accountability framework. So, as a system, in August, superintendent worked with staff to identify, again, some performance, key performance indicators at the elementary, at the middle school, and at the high school level, and what you see is those indicators. The ones that are highlighted in red are really connected to grade-level readiness, whether that be third-grade readiness, middle-school readiness, or high-school readiness, or readiness for graduation, or A-through-G completion. We've shared with you these definitions of grade-level readiness, as they're tied to our expanded learning summer program, but these are not unique and only specific to expanded learning summer program, these are readiness indicators for third-grade, middle school, high school, et cetera. And I will say that these are, the definitions here are underdevelopment. What we need to do, and what we want to do, is find additional multiple measures to identify when a student is or is not ready. So, the council's report really called out a data infrastructure and a data framework, the importance of having data readily available, so that we can see what is happening in the system, but we can also see if improvements are being made. What you have in front of you is just one of those indicators around third-grade readiness, okay? And at the third-grade level, this grade-level on-track readiness rate is looking at what percentage of third graders within SAC City Unified are on track for grade-level readiness, and what you can see from this slide, at the point where this snapshot was taken, 26% of them were, okay? And this is based on information from second trimester report cards. What the system, though, also allows us to do is take a look at third-grade readiness and the students who are on track for third-grade readiness for our students with disabilities. So, what you have here is just a breakdown of our students with disabilities, as well as our students who are in RSP, SDC, or other special education categories. And what you can see, I mean, if you look at the green, the wider range of our students who are on track for grade-level readiness, are our students in the general education To highlight this even further, this, the system also allows us to see disproportionality, to what degree are students with disability underrepresented or overrepresented in this category of on-track grade-level readiness? And that's in relationship to what is their percentage in the general education population. Here you can see that 56% of our students in second grade, 56%, our students in second grade, our students with disability in second grade are underrepresented in grade-level readiness. Half is likely to be in that category, about, half is likely to be in that category. So, again, this is really driving home the need, but also our ability to see in a way, to see where our students are performing in a way that we have not historically been So, highlighting the importance of having these key performance indicators across these different segments, and that our ability to analyze and collect data on them. As we determine what to do in the system, it's important that we kind of assess what the changes will be, what changes will be needed, and this, this is our theory of change and what we're, we're looking at, okay? If you take a look to the left, the circles on the left, I just want to call your attention to the gray band above where it says impact. What we're looking to do is really change conditions in the present, right? Like, how can we, how can we engage in activities that will change what is happening with our students in real time, okay? At the same time, we need to do long-range planning and think strategically about, you know, what do we do over time, okay? The circle on the, on the right-hand side really speaks to what has to be considered in, if the change is going to really have an impact. So, we need to look at our curriculum and instruction infrastructure, our professional learning infrastructure, logistics and operations, and supervision and evaluation. What this graphic represents is just simply those four areas that on this visual are very separate, and which is how we normally work, coming into interaction, so that there can be greater impact. So, the example of how this is playing out in real time in the district is really looking at those, those grade-level readiness indicators, and where are our students with disabilities falling, but also, in our expanded summer learning program, how many of those students who are, who are not grade-level ready will be impacted or potentially impacted, have been found eligible for our expanded summer learning program? And so you can see here, this is across the grade levels where they're falling, the students that will be impacted, this is the number of students that could potentially be impacted in our summer learning program. The blue bar is the general education students, and the orange are our students with disabilities. And you can see at every grade level that we're serving this summer, there are students with disabilities. This is exclusive of our extended school-year program that is for our students with disabilities whose IEPs call for an extended school year, okay? Becky will speak to recommendation number two, which is about our special education referral and assessment and eligibility.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Aguilar. I'm going to talk about recommendation two from the council audit. It spoke to, it speaks to referrals for possible eligibility for services, the district's assessment practices, and the eligibility of students for special education services. A comparison of other urban school districts reveals that populations of students with disabilities are growing. However, Sacramento has a slightly higher percentage of students with disabilities in comparison to its general population than other urban districts. If we recognize that our system is inequitable by design, and our work is to confront these inequities, it is imperative that equity, access, and social justice serves as a check and balance to examine our practices, processes, and policies that may actually be reinforcing the very systems we're trying to interrupt. To that end, we have developed a new element to tend to our operations, specific to special education services. This element has been developed, and we will work throughout the summer to populate the data and perform quality control checks of the data before being available in the fall. The first operational element is special education identification. We serve a wide variety of students with disabilities. Our largest population of students are students with specific learning disabilities, followed by students with speech and language impairments. Although our population of students with autism is lower than both of the previous categories, it's our fastest-growing population of students currently. While the audit did not call out with specificity the need to provide strong support services and targeted instruction for students with learning disabilities, it did point to a need to know and understand what each student needs specifically to progress academically and socially, from the system, site, and student level. This slide provides data on the number and percent of specific Asian races relative to the overall number of students who are Asian and receiving special education services. As you can see, 40% of the students who are Asian and receiving special education services This element, when populated, will show more real-time data regarding disproportionality specific to students with disabilities, to keep us informed of our needs to provide specific interventions to support our students. As you can see from this representation, students with IEPs who are Black or African-American are overrepresented in special education in comparison to overall enrollment, and our same group of students who are Hispanic are also overrepresented. Conversely, students with IEPs who are Native American are underrepresented in comparison to the overall enrollment, and our same group of students who are Asian are also underrepresented. And as you can see, this follows the same line for our specific Asian races, we are overrepresented, are more highly represented in MONG than in other Asian categories. So, again, we believe it's important that we focus on the identification of students for eligibility for special education. To further delineate our data, there will be related indicators that focus on the number and percentage of site-based referrals for assessments that result in eligibility, and the number and percentage of students found eligible as students with emotional disturbance, disaggregated by student groups. Currently, the data that we have at our disposal, to track the student data, is not easily accessible, and it's time-consuming to compile. Utilizing our past data, we are able to determine that students who are referred for special education assessments, approximately 75% of them actually qualify for services. And those would be our full-team referrals for students for eligibility. And then, when you look at the number and percent of students found eligible as a student with an emotional disturbance, approximately 50% of the students we assess are actually qualified with this disability, with this classification. So, I'd like to draw you to a final point in this recommendation and how it relates to the equity, access, and social justice principle. One of the audit recommendations was to analyze our past practice of utilizing dedicated assessment teams for the eligibility for ED and autism. Feedback from both site, staff, our parents, and assessors expressed concern that this practice might actually delay, delay services to students, or act as a perceived gatekeeper from services related to these students. The department engaged with the CTA and staff impacted to study a way to realign the assessment practice for ED eligibility for the 1718 school year. A process was developed, has been utilized throughout our school year by all of our assessment staff. Again, another check and balance that we developed to meet this need. Each of you should have a copy at your seat of this standard work process that was developed from this work around the assessment for ED eligibility and the teams. We'd like to draw your attention to some specific things, that we want to make clear that any individual has the right to request an assessment, especially a parent. And then the second and third highlighted areas show that we've maintained a multidisciplinary team format for these assessments, which we believe give a higher quality control. Recommendation three of the council's report focuses on academic achievement and social-emotional well-being. Again, we highlight the need to review and address relevant data, which is a standard theme of the recommendations. As you can see, these and other actions as well are needed, but especially put an emphasis on having relevant data to analyze as our foundation. but especially put an emphasis on having relevant data to analyze as our foundation. Our current graduation rates lag behind the state and three of the four other urban districts compared. In ELA, we are above the state average for students with disabilities, but our achievement lags behind two other of the comparison districts. In math, again, we are ahead of the state average for students with disabilities, but lag behind two of the comparison districts. Finally, in a comparison of time in general education settings compared to other urban districts, Sacramento has a higher percentage of students with disabilities that spend eighty percent or more of their school day in the general education classroom than the comparison districts. But we also have a higher percent of students educated in separate schools. Equity, access, and social justice is about respecting the value of the data and establishing continuous improvement and an accountability framework that's transparent, looks at our student, our data by student, by name, by need, and its inequity and its injustice.
So for recommendation three, again, that deals with academic achievement and social emotional well-being. In the previous slide, I shared with you a slide that looked similar to this. The difference is around third grade readiness. The difference is we are in the process of developing, again, some special education-specific information that will help us understand how are our students performing in some key areas. And so what you see here is a set of indicators for elementary school or special education elementary school, special education middle school, and then here, special education high school indicators. And they really evolve around grade level readiness as well as percent of time in the least restrictive environment. As you can see from the fourth one in here. And then for high school, we want to know what percentage of our students persist into a fifth year of high school and actually graduate in five years instead of four. So as we go into, I'm actually, we're going to actually try to take you into the system live. One, you'll get a clearer picture of just the information that is available to us. So Mr. Harris is going to be my pilot for this portion.
Harris, I just want to point out that we're only at slide forty and we have almost thirty more slides to go. And we're already out of time for the presentation. So just in terms of being mindful of that in the public comments that we're going to want to take.
Absolutely. I think we can navigate to this pretty quickly. Okay, we'll abandon that. Let's go back to the PowerPoint. Okay, so some of this, you know, thank you. So after, within the system, again, we can take a look at our students by grade level, which we shared with you before. So this is a snapshot of on-track readiness for graduation. And what you'll see is we can see this information for ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade. And the snapshot shot you see here is we can see student names. So again, inequity, injustice by name as well. So you can see it's for eleventh grade. This would be a list of the students who are on track for graduation. Let's use our example of our eleventh grade student. And just to highlight some of the work that's underway in the district to support our students, not just our students with, our students, our general education students, but our students with disabilities as well. So you see here a student who's in eleventh grade. And I'm going to skip through some of these for the sake of time. This is a student who is off-track in high school by about ten credits, or five credits for history, social science. This is a student who we can actually see, not just for him or for other students within the system, how many of them are also off-track in one, any key area in terms of subject areas. So it helps us identify what are the resources and what are the needs of the students. Another example of how the system would work is in this area of social emotional well-being. This is an indicator, again, that's under development, which is why you don't see any, a number there. So the social emotional well-being will be comprised of, you know, we know that our students with disabilities are very vulnerable in terms of bullying or harassment. And so this indicator is getting at, what is the number and percentage of students with disabilities who are reporting a bullying incident but who have a safety plan that's been developed and they don't experience a recurring experience of bullying within that school year? So we have a student here who's in fifth grade. Again, bullying incident report has been filed. She has a safety plan in place. And currently, the way that we gather this information is just, it's paper, right? Paper on spreadsheets. And this will allow us, again, to see more clearly who these students are and if they are having any greater success within the system. You guys, as you're aware, the recommendations, the council issued ten recommendations. And for the sake of time, we'll pause with number three and just share with you some next steps. And then we'll open it up to public comment and questions. This is a hefty report. Lot of things that are recommended. And so, you know, just the time that's needed to do it justice is not quite here tonight. So our next steps, again, is to refine this data department-level accountability dashboard as well as the general district dashboard so that we can monitor within regular cycles of data availability. Develop standard work processes so that everyone in the system who's engaging in the work, such as the ED assessment process, is aware of the steps that are needed in order for that process to be carried out successfully. We also want to explore developing learning support centers. Our plan is to develop a support for more inclusive sites through a learning support center model where we can return students to their school of residence. And then expand upon the professional learning that was engaged in this year with our new teachers to also include site leaders with a focus on IEP development and implementation. We've also begun with providing instructional materials into our moderate-to-severe SDC classes and want to also do the same with our mild-to-moderate classrooms in alignment with our ELA curriculum adoption. And then looking to colleagues across the state and across the region to help us be thought partners in terms of our supports for our students with disabilities. And finally, this collaboration with other departments within the central office as well as in the school, focused on school culture and climate initiatives. And so with that, I'll conclude and open it up to public comment.
Mr. Barrios, do we have any public comments at this time?
Yes, we do. If you could come up in order when you're called. Carl Pinkston, Grace Trujillo, Angie Sutherland, Jessica Tavera, The Lines, Angel Garcia, Sandy Gagain, Sheila Aragay, Andrea Monteron, Mona Towatau.
Thank you. Before we start the clock, I want to remind everyone, we have two minutes each. I want to be mindful of everyone's time. And I do know that board members also have quite a few questions and want to do due diligence on this item.
Good evening. My name is Carl Pinkston. I'm with the Black Parallel School Board this time. I do have a couple of comments as it relates to the presentation and then also to the efforts and initiative underway. So one is, I think this is the first step. Data is a critical component, but it's not the complete step as it relates to this particular issue. Last year, the Black Parallel School Board held a listening session with parents who were having issues with their kids with disabilities. It was an eye-opener for me. It was painful to listen. And it was painful to get through that process. But a couple of things that came out of it. One was, it was clear that in terms of this particular issue, there is a critical need that this district needs an oversight of the process of implementation. It has extreme difficulty implementing things. It has a lot of great ideas, that's one. So there needs an oversight that includes, you know, parents, students, community, everyone to be a part of the oversight of the implementation process. Two, I looked at the data in terms of how much money is spent. And it seems like somewhere around eighteen thousand dollars per student. That's a lot of money. But it is clear from when I talk with the parents, the money is not going to the student. The third particular piece has to do with the bullying. There's a sense of climate where students and kids do not feel welcome. And so there's a need to redefine what's our students as not deficit or a problem, but an asset to this district. And then last but not least, we, there's not data and approach that deals with the disproportionality around suspension that for students of disability.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. We appreciate your comments. Ms. Trujillo.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Aguilar. You know, it's, I really appreciate the fact of having recommendations. You know, I think one of the key things, we decided to form a coalition. Our new coalition, as everybody could see, is Coalition for Students with Disabilities. As I mentioned before, we're coming back. We're coming back strong and working together. I think we were trying to figure out what kind of coalition did we want it to be. As you all know in the report, it says that this particular district has, is working on because of the fact of the strong unions, of the strong different groups that over time has been made it very difficult. I think the other day was teacher appreciation and I asked my son to pick out a card. I read three different cards for him and the one he chose was kindness. Thank you for being kind to me. And I think, as a group, I started thinking, what am I going to say about my group, which is the union for our kids, which you'll be hearing just recently? And I think we all came down to kindness, working together, not finding ways of bullying each other as adults as well, too. So for further ado, I'm going to, the rest of the team is going to go on different sections and recommendations. How are we going to do it together as a team? And remember, these recommendations is not only going to affect children with disabilities, it's going to help all children. Because some of these fundamentals, as everybody knows, helps all, not just a group. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trujillo. Ms. Sutherland?
Good evening, everyone. Angie Sutherland. We're here with members of our Coalition for Students with Disabilities, which we have formed to amplify and unify parent and student voices and inspire needed change in Sac City Unified School District as well as in the greater Sacramento area to ensure excellence in education for students with disabilities. I want to thank all the coalition members and volunteers who came out tonight or today to participate in our rally. We also have parents here from other school districts who want to make a difference. And many of us have been members of the CAC or the LCAP Committee, or we serve on different PTAs, school site councils, and the graduation task force. I want to thank all of the students also who spoke. And we really want to thank you for putting this item on the agenda because we have not had a response on what's happening with the audit. Very little vague information that we've been given so far. So however, while we were hoping to see a fully comprehensive plan and hear that tonight, it's a very complex issue. It needs more time than just one little board presentation. We were hoping to see a plan with timelines and concrete information. But what we see is, aside from the data that the district is collecting, we don't see specific statements that speak to the whole issues in the audit. And we're sad that it says that it's at the beginning stages since we've had this data for a long time and the IEPs are all data. Why isn't that being looked at? We've been seeing these, the same type of responses over the years of vague things. And Angel and Jessica are going to talk a little bit more and then we have some other comments as well.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland.
Hello, my name is Jessica Tavera, The Lines. Hello, School Board and Superintendent Aguilar. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Following the May 2017 audit, the CAC asked the board just three things, just three things, keep in mind, just three things. First was that the board, that we assigned a board-level special education committee to oversee the district's plan and progress to address the grieve differences or the deficits found in the audit. That's all. It's real simple. The second one was to follow the audit's team recommendation and reorganize the special ed division and hire a proven expert outside to consult, to take the reins, to turn around the outcomes for students with disabilities. And last, to establish a strategic plan to implement the audit's recommendations. One year later, none of these things have happened. And that's outrageous. Really, it is. It's mind-blowing, to say the least. Sac City Unified needs a dedicated project manager, an expert, to implement the audit recommendations and whose only job, only job, to prioritize and work across the system with all parties to implement what's needed. We don't need another role assigned, role assigned to a position that was not even planned for this, another chief. Too many cooks, you know, in the kitchen, we all know what that spells. So here we are. And all we're asking for is just give us clear indications of what you plan to do, supported by data. You all have access to the outcomes for about a year now. We need action. We need action now, accountability now. That slogan is good, no time to lose. You say that our children are our future, their future is now, not next year, not five years from now. You know, I had to pull my son out of this district because his needs were being met. I would love to say, "Son, you can go back." But I can't do that right now as it stands. Thank you for the opportunity.
Good evening, board president, superintendent, and board members. My name's Angel Garcia. I'm also a member of the coalition. Just piggybacking off what Jessica said, if the district doesn't know what's going on by now, this is a clear reason of why the audit recommendation, the audit recommended restructuring. I want to address section two of the response under the governance that there was a statement about the SCUSD's guiding principle, which is, SCUSD's equity, access, and social justice guiding principle calls for all students to be given equal opportunity to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the rightest array of options. The statement was that students with disabilities are the most vulnerable students when it comes to actualizing this guiding principle because of the diverse needs they have. I would disagree with this. I would say this isn't just about this diverse needs, it's about the inequitable system that they've been trying to get services and progress from. that they've been trying to get services and progress from. If you substituted any other student in this sentence, your board and the community would be outraged. Students with disabilities are a vulnerable group, yes, but we believe that the situation was amplified by the climate created, by situations like Appendix D, which we talked about, which existed in the district for over 20 years, a lack of training, a lack of support for those serving students in the district, hanging their hat as if there's no potential. That's the excuse to how they define how they're treating our students. This is not acceptable to any other group being served. When serving students, it has to mean all. I was very disappointed by this presentation, I have to tell you, wholly disappointed. We don't need any more planning, we don't need any more data. We didn't just get this data from the audit. We've had years and years and years of data. Where are the action items? Where are the timelines? This is ridiculously vague and fills the same explanation as in past years and past special education presentations. The plan shows little as to the role for principals will play with respect to the oversight of special education in their school, and it seems that all of the responsibility is being placed on the Special Education Department personnel and absence of accountability by school leaders. They talked about MTSS. We haven't heard what's happening at all. The audit was a piece of data, but we've had this information, and we have enough information that we can use to act. So I want to say, students deserve accountability and action now. My son is 15 years old, he's about to be 16, and I had to pull him from this district, like many of the parents I know. We don't have any more time to develop strategic plans and fluff up things that we're doing. We want specific information on how the district's going to act. We don't have any more time.
Thank you, Angel.
Superintendent Aguilar and board members, first I want to say that that audit is based on data that was there all along. The data was there all along, and general education students are students that have data looked at and planned upon all the time, year by year, in your site councils, in all your committees, that data was there. But I came here today as Sandra Gagan to talk about the lack of inclusion. Research has proven time and again that inclusion benefits all students. The audit quotes a 10-year longitudinal transition study of more than 11,000 students aged 13 to 16, and showed more time in general education equals scores closer to grade level on standardized math and language tests than students in separate schools. It also showed, including students with a range of disabilities, in general education classes does not affect the achievement of their non-disabled peers. Other studies show higher graduation rates when there is inclusion. Yet, in every category of disability, this district educates students in more restrictive settings at higher rates than the nation. Overall, almost two times more than the state and nation. This is California. This is the capital of California, and we should be setting the bar. I believe in public schools because I believe my special education student and my general education students have richer lives and are more prepared to be leaders in their communities if they are educated in diverse settings. If general education students never see students who need a lesson delivered in a different way, how will they know how to promote their ideas in their future communities? If they never see students learning emotional regulation and replacement skills, they may not be prepared when they encounter that in the future or when they need that themselves. This is about all the future leaders and members of our communities.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, and board members. Mona Tao Tao, I'm speaking on behalf of my organization, Western Center on Law and Poverty, as well as Disability Rights California, the National Center for Youth Law, Legal Services of Northern California, and Mental Health Advocacy Services. We speak in support of the well-being and success of students with disabilities in the district, and support the important advocacy that the Coalition for Students with Disabilities and the Black Parallel School Board are engaged in. We would like to thank Superintendent Aguilar for agreeing to meet with us in response to a letter we sent earlier this month to discuss the very things that are being presented on and discussed this evening, and we look forward to that meeting. And we appreciate the fact that the district has finally released a report on the audit and steps being taken. Three areas of primary concern I would like to highlight, based on the audit as well as our information from families and community members. One is delays and inaccuracies in identifying and assessing disability. So those long delays combined with over-identifying African-American students as having emotional disturbance, and on the other side, under-identifying English learners with disabilities. Two, a failure to offer students with disabilities necessary services like evidence-based instruction and mental health services that they're entitled to, which leads to the disproportionate discipline that Mr. Pinkston spoke to, and unaddressed bullying that then leads to bad outcomes. Three, even when services are offered, they aren't individualized and scientifically based for children with disabilities. So then you end up with too much segregation in facilities and classrooms. So just to reiterate, one, on a systemic basis, timely and accurate identification and assessment; two, providing the services that students need and are entitled to; and three, quality services that are effective. And all of this needs to be informed by what the community is saying, and I'm wrapping up, with cultural competency and making sure that you're mitigating bias in terms of disability, race, and ethnicity.
And can I ask you to please share the letter that you submitted to Superintendent Aguilar with the full board?
Yes, happy to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Do we have any additional public comments at this time? No. So I think at this point, we're going to take board member questions and comments. I'm going to go ahead and begin as my board members start to light up their microphones as well. So I will tell you, when we requested this presentation, we requested this presentation because we felt in many ways we were in a state of crisis. For those of us on the board, certainly I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I do know I've had many individual conversations on just this topic. And a year ago, as we were first getting the findings from the special education audit, we were feeling very hopeful and proud. We were proud because we had requested a self-audit. We had recognized the brokenness of the system, and really were seeking to lean into that and utilize a thoughtful analysis of that brokenness as a tool for change for a student population arguably among our most vulnerable and being left behind. We had some very actionable recommendations from the great city schools, a very, I think, honest assessment of some of the challenges that are unique to our district, and some very clear ways that we could address those challenges. With the new superintendent, I think I've often heard the statement, and I think it's true, that some of the problems that he's come into, and there has been an enormous magnitude that he has had to grapple with on his first few months on the job, are not his fault, but they are his problem, right? And he has unabashedly been willing to embrace that. That being said, at the very moment, we're getting an overview of data and the guiding principle, and how we are going to be able to use that as a tool for informing change. There was, for me, an astonishing absence of direct and actionable work to benefit our special education students, our students with disabilities. And so I will tell you, if I was a parent watching this presentation, I would, one, be discouraged by how wonky, how loaded with educationist it was. I mean, it was difficult for someone even like myself, who has 10 years in education policy, to really wade through what the various acronyms and vocabulary that was being thrown out meant. And when that's unpeeled and you go deeper, the biggest question I was left with is, what does this mean in terms of what is actually being done to serve our students with disabilities? And perhaps we have not been able to do much between the May initial presenting of the audit findings to date, but I would far rather, as a district, say that we are grappling with how to institute those recommendations, we are recognizing that we have to pull in an outside expert from the state or national level to be able to really rebuild and reimagine our special education department as we know it, than to try to weave this population into the narrative of everything else we're doing. Because I absolutely believe that our students with disability should be able to graduate with the maximum access to opportunities from the widest array of choices, but I don't think that that alone is sufficient to meet their needs. So just a few closing comments, and then I'm going to open it up to my board fellow colleagues for questions and comments. I have repeatedly heard over the years from some of the special education advocates in this room, the challenges with communications, whether it's communications of available services, practices, or even point people when faced with grievances. And I have experienced that firsthand. As a parent myself, I'm beginning to try and navigate the special education system, having my children tested for a learning disability. I shared a story with the superintendent that I found to be astonishing, which was, on a Monday, I was told that on a Friday, I was going to have an IEP meeting for my child. On a Monday. And I was told that I had by law the right to request an advocate to join me five days in advance, while I received in the mail this notice of an IEP meeting that Friday. I immediately canceled everything so that I could make that IEP work meeting with my schedule, and then when I called to confirm the meeting, was told, "Oops, we made a mistake. It's actually June 8th." And I cannot help but think, as the parent of two children in the district, having African-American children, having children who have navigated myriad challenges and trauma in their own lives, if this is happening to me as a board member, what is happening to students and families grappling with disabilities throughout the district? And I say this because, for me, this underscores the magnitude of the problem. And I am very aware that the staff is working extremely hard to build a system that can begin to address the inequities. But I would rather be honest about the work that needs to continue to be built for our special education population and our students with disabilities than weave them into the narrative of a broader strategy that doesn't have real and practical applications for them. And so I think we have a question from Board Member Vang. Board Member Pritchett.
Thank you, President Ryan. Well, I'd like to applaud your efforts for the system that will show us in whole where our students stand, and we can catch them in an early stage. But I can tell you, I'm frustrated as a board member, and I'm sure you're frustrated as staff, too. But, you know, I remember us talking about on this board that we were going to have the Council of Great City Schools come in and do this audit, and then we were going to fix things. And then I worried, because of past things that had happened, will this be another report that will sit on a shelf and collect dust? And then I see the date. It was November 2016 when we received it. Is that correct? Pardon me? 2016?
Yes.
November 2016?
Last November.
Or 2017?
Yeah, they came in November of 2016.
That's a long time, and so it's very frustrating. And I understand the frustration of our parents that are sitting in the room, and that are advocate for their children day after day. I do want to know, probably twice a month, sometimes a little bit more than that, I get a call from a parent in my area. And it's usually based, a lot of times, it's usually based on special education services that aren't, and their needs not being met, right? And when I talk it through with the parents, it seems like they're getting information from the school or from their teachers that isn't, it isn't correct. And they seem like they're, I'll skip that comment. I guess my question to you is fantastic. We have this information now, right? What are we going to do in the future? I agree that there's no timelines on here that show us like, okay, we have it, we know how to do early detection. What do we do from here? Can you answer that?
Yeah, so I would just like to maybe, I don't know if it's clarify or explain, when we're talking about the information that, and truly wish that we had been able to do a workshop instead of a presentation, because the things that we've outlined in terms of the information that we collect, that is available to us or that we can make available to ourselves. For example, this idea of our students spending more time in the general education setting, right? Are we able to collect that in real time?
No.
No, right? The idea of improving upon that, are more of our students experiencing more time in the general education setting? Are we able to report to you on that? No. But we need to be able to do that. So our work this year has been building, right, that infrastructure so that we can report to you on things that are happening, on things, on improvements that are being made within the system. Okay? So when I say beginning, that's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about like, our ability to come back to you and say, yes, this has been done. So for example, our parents, okay? And our parent satisfaction with what we're having or dissatisfaction? Other than hearing anecdotally from each of you that something's been hap, do we have a way of aggregating that information up to say, yes, our parents are feeling more satisfied, or no, our parents are not feeling more satisfied? No. Can we? Yes. Okay? And so when we talk about special education-specific indicators, that's what we're talking about. Building out a way for us to be able to say, yes, an improvement is happening, no, an improvement is not happening, what do we do? That's what I'm talking about. The idea of the work that's underway within the system, okay? I'll use the Expanded Learning Summer Program as an example. Key, okay, key to trying to get more students to be on grade level when they come back in September, inclusive of students with disabilities. Would we have been able to report to you on that last year? No. Will we be able to report to you on that this year? Yes. And in subsequent years? Yes, to see if there is anything changing in the system. And that is what I'm talking about in terms of the work that has been underway.
I appreciate that.
We want to be able to come back to you and say, not anecdotally, but with data that supports, that there is significant changes beyond an S-PA, beyond a CAS, right? Board Member Ryan, you spoke about just the timeliness of IEP completion. Could we create a way of identifying, are we on track for completing IEPs on time? Can we do that now? No, we cannot. Are we able to do it within the system? Yes, we can create it, but that will take time for us to work with our colleagues to develop it. This data, yes, it's there, but we're pulling it from this system and that system?
So Dr. Taylor, that sort of, no, I appreciate that passion and that candid response, because I think, I think that that's what parents need to hear, I think that that's what we need to hear. I think that that's extremely important in terms of understanding how you see the work moving forward.
I agree, and I know this is not easy work. I think that, and I guarantee you that everybody in the audience right now is thinking, this is not an easy job to be done, but it has to be done. And I, yeah. So my other question is, okay, So my other question is, okay, so we gather this information at the Surna Center, at our district office, right? How are we giving the supports to our school sites to make sure that it's being done correct and that our service, the students are getting the services that they need?
Yeah, again, I mean, this is the challenge of trying to do this in this space. Had the system worked, we could show you, it's gathered at the central office level, but every school site has access to this data as well.
But who's overseeing it? Like, who's making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing at the school sites?
Right. Another area that we would have spoken about is just the reorganization of the system. So under Superintendent Aguilar's leadership, he came in and he reorganized the academic office. Instructional Assistant Superintendent is now reporting the academic office. This has been the work that they have been engaging principals in this entire school year, understanding these data systems, right? They have the information, as we populate, they have that information at their disposal. So it's, that's what I mean by being, it's nascent work, but it's happening and it's underway. We just need to, I agree, the urgency of this is, we feel it acutely, okay? And I think that's part of what you're hearing in my response, we feel it acutely. But what we're trying to do is build infrastructure, build processes and standardized processes so that everyone who knows, who needs to know how to do something, it's not just in someone's head, or I'm telling Becky how to do this, it's actually all spelled out. So as new people come into the system, this is how we do this. But that's all foundational work within the system. It's not, let's say it's not flashy, it's not, you know, it's just work that has to be done in order for things to run a lot more smoothly and for our outcomes to change.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
With the 10 recommendations, do you have a timeline of when we'll be hearing about those and what we're doing?
Yeah, we can, we'll just take direction from you in terms of like, how you would like that to happen and when you would like that to happen. We had some of that tonight, but, yeah.
Board Member Hanson.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation and the work thus far. It's obviously a very frustrating topic that's multi-tiered and highly complex. For me, as a board member, you know, I have a lot of comments. You know, obviously, I think a big part of what I hear about a lot is bullying of students. I think that's something that kind of goes hand in hand with all this and has a big impact on student outcomes. It's certainly not a new problem. I think it's recognized as a problem now like it never was in the past. I think a lot of times, it was just considered part of childhood, and it's going to take a lot of work to change the culture around that. And it's not just our district, it's every place in America. There's a lot of bullying that happens everywhere. You know, one of the speakers mentioned Appendix D. We tried to negotiate that for years. I'm happy that we forced the issue and made that part of our contract. I'm glad to hear the earlier speaker say that, you know, they're going to be part of the work going forward, that we need SCTA to be partners in our work right now. You know, we waste a lot of time on silly grievances that are filed against our district that take up time, waste time purposefully. You know, when the superintendent came and joined our team, we wasted several months on negotiations when we could have been working for our students. And we waste a lot of time on things that aren't the right focus for our district. And I hope that the people that are in charge of that, the adults, will stop worrying about themselves and start worrying a little bit more about our students. There's a lot of things that we have to be willing to talk about. I mean, one thing I don't see in the next steps is special ed parents. You know, where is the emphasis on providing the support to the families that are grappling with this? You know, we face a lot of lawsuits from special ed parents, and there's obviously frustration that's happened on their part to get them to that point. I also think there's some predatory behavior on legal and illegal realm in this span. That's something that we should be honest about. But every time we settle a lawsuit, get involved in that, that's money off the table for everybody, you know, our students as well. Every time we worry about silly grievances, you know, we're wasting time and wasting money on that as well. So we can't ignore the fiscal challenges of all this and the requirements and the mandates that are put on this district for serving special education students. We only get partially funded for that from the federal and state government. We know, and just need to be honest, it costs more money to educate a special education student than it does for a general education student. You know, what's, how are we going to handle the debate around that? We have 16% of our students are assessed to special education. There's a limitless amount of resources that every one of our students wants and needs. How are we going to balance the costs with that? Are we really going to have partners up and down our system that want to work on this issue, or do they just see it as another opportunity to leverage something else that they want? There's a lot of frustration that's involved in this topic. You know, I think that we, you know, I agree with one of the other speakers that we need more than one presentation on this, and this was too, it wasn't an effective presentation for me. So it really didn't, wasn't a good service to me, and I don't think it was for our community. So we need to sharpen up our skills on that. You know, I would support a full board meeting on this topic. I think it merits it, it's such a gigantic part of our budget. I don't think there's any district in California that's doing a really good job on this. And I think there's a widespread recognition that this part of the education funding is going to be one of the places that is going to be a gigantic fiscal challenge for this entire state. So we need to be honest and be adults about this whole situation on this and be prepared for some difficult conversations. But I think there's a lot of work that still needs to be done here. I was excited when Superintendent Aguilar obviously joined our team. When this was done, we had anticipated being able to keep our last superintendent. That wasn't the right decision to do, and that's why we have the superintendent sitting here that we do now. And this was dropped in his lap on day one, and frankly, there was a whole lot of things that needed to be done that had to be done first. And now that he started working on this in the last couple of months, what he said to us was, I want this to be part of my accountability plan. So he's asked us to be written into one of the things that we as board members are going to keep him to look at for accountability for how he's doing his job. So he's not shying away from a challenge that's an extraordinary challenge. I applaud that. I'm going to be, yeah, I think it's important for people to know. And, you know, I'm going to be a team member on that. I hope SCTA will be a team member on that. We can't be successful without you. This is going to be a giant job, it's going to take a long time, and if we really are rowing together in the same direction, we can be successful. It's unfortunate that can't be done immediately because there is no time to waste, and every day delayed for a student who needs extra resources, you know, is a tragedy, obviously. But this is such a gigantic problem that no one knows really what to do, there's so much to be done. I just hope people will assume best intentions because we do have the best of intentions and be partners in this and, you know, be part of the team.
Thank you, Board Member Hanson. Board Member Cochran, followed by Board Member Minnick, followed by Board Member Wu.
Thank you, President Ryan. When a problem is as complex and intricate as this, it's very important to address the problem and address it specifically. Using scolding language or casting aspersions or being pejorative in speak is not helpful. What is helpful is an intellect like our superintendent. He wants to not go into the realm that I just mentioned. He wants to stay positive, he wants to focus on problems and solutions. This is not going to be easy because it is processes that have been not working correctly since their inception. The laws of special ed have rolled through, and we have not kept up with them. Gathering of data and tracking whether jobs have been done or not done are a perfect way to solve this. I very much support him, and I know that he will address this problem without negativity and in a positive way. I would like to ask a specific question, and it's just because I'm very detail-oriented, and I know that, Dr. Taylor, you said that you'll look to us for the timeline? Well, what does that mean exactly?
For the future presentation, that's what I meant.
Right. But what about the timeline for actually creating these changes and implementing them?
So as, I didn't mean to look to you for timelines for that. That is our work, right? And, you know, developing specific plans grounded, it's a little hard to explain this, grounded in some key change ideas, right? As you all are saying, this is massive, right? But what we can do is identify some key changes, right, within the system that, again, we build out a way for us to report to you what is happening and changing in the system as a result of that. We can absolutely do that, do that and bring that forward. I would say, you know, that is part of the work that we planned for summer. We can bring it to you as early, I'm going to probably consult with the superintendent around what would be a good timeline for that.
I think that the board would like to chunk it up, you know, and get parts of it so we can see the progress, give you encouragement, and ask you tough questions. If we see it part by part, I think it will give people hope too, who have been part of the system and been very frustrated that there is real change that is happening. And I would like to thank you and your team for their work. I think that this is a very positive direction, and I have great hopes and I support your work.
Thank you.
Board Member Minnick.
Thank you. So I'm feeling frustrated, I'm feeling disappointed, and it's not because I don't think you're putting a lot of energy and effort into this, because I know, I know that you are. I had really hoped to, you know, sit through this presentation and leave feeling like I was seeing some tangible things that were moving forward. And I know that sometimes those things that we're moving forward on is just identifying, you know, our needs. But I also know a year ago when we got this report, we had information, we knew what our needs were, we knew where we were failing these kids. And so I had hoped by now, we would have seen some real changes in the classroom for our kids. And it's not to say that that's not happening, but I'm not leaving tonight knowing whether that's happening, and that's frustrating to me. And I know you're working hard on this, but that was disappointing. I really want to acknowledge the newly formed Coalition for Student Disabilities and apologize that a year has gone by since we got this report, and many of you felt the need to create this coalition, felt the need to remove your kids from our district, felt that we failed them. That's sad. And I'm sorry that we haven't been on top of this the way we should have. I will say, some of the time when, I'm sorry, I was supposed to be paying attention, I was reading through some of your report to us. And in this, the questions you raise under each of these recommendations is going to be really useful, and it's going to be really helpful. And I'm already going through and picking out things where I'm going like, yeah, why is that? Or what are we doing about this? And it's in plain, real language that someone like me, who is not a special education expert, can understand. So thank you. Thank you for putting this, and for those of you that have decided to send your kids outside of the district and still came back and created this and advocating for all these other kids that, when you don't even have a child in the district, I really appreciate that, because that just says that you are committed to all these kids. So I really appreciate all of you being here and doing this work. Thank you.
And our final board member comment is from Board Member Wu.
Thank you, President Ryan. I want to thank you for your presentation. I do share some of the concerns of my colleagues, but I do want to say that I appreciate the difference between real-time data, need to collect it, versus looking at past data and trying to extrapolate the future from that. You suggest that rather than a board presentation, a workshop would have probably been a better forum. As part of, a member of being the executive committee, one of our responsibilities is to set agendas. So I'm willing to give you a whole day if you want to do a workshop on special education and get, and given the length and the number of PowerPoints that you had today, I think a whole day is probably warranted. And I'm not uncomfortable in setting aside a day for you and the community and the board members to have a learning session on special education, not only what you are doing today to make sure that the data collection in real time is going to be there, but then what are you going, in telling us, when are you going to implement what you're going to do with that real data? And I think that that has some value. And if you think that you want to be able to roll it out in the fall, or you want to roll it out during the summertime, because you mentioned that you're going to be working diligently in June and July to pull this all together, and share with us the training that the administrator is going to be receiving so they can keep their eyes on the ball on behalf of our children as well, especially our special ed children, and the special training that individual or professional development that individual teachers might need to have in order to keep their eye focused, as well as not only their general ed students, but be mindful of their special ed students at the same time. One of the comments that I hear, unfortunately, is about the bullying that has gone on unchecked at the school sites, either unrecognized by any, maybe a parent, or, excuse me, unrecognized by someone in the classroom, but maybe some of the other students are engaging in it. And our children, our special ed children, should be made to feel safe, and it has always been my hope and dream that our social-emotional learning activities will teach our children how to treat people who don't necessarily look like them or act like them with greater respect and compassion. Maybe we need a little more emphasis in that, or we may need to undertake a different type of training. But what I hear from the parents who have pulled their children out of our schools because of continuous unchecked bullying at the school sites tears at me, because that's telling me that what we are trying here is not necessarily working. Now, it may be working in that we could have tenfold more bullying that has not occurred because of our activities, I don't know that. But the point is that there's a lot of moving pieces. And I think that a day dedicated to you telling us what, how we're going to And I think that a day dedicated to you telling us what, how we're going to meet the needs of these special education children deserves a day. And if you want to tell us when you want to do it, not today, maybe sometime in the future, we as the executive committee, I think my colleagues would join me in being happy to schedule that for you, to give you that forum.
Absolutely. Thank you, Vice President Wu. I would just echo that statement. You know, we have instituted a series of learning sessions. We recognize that we are not content experts and that it's difficult in a short period of time to delve into such complex subject matter. So we absolutely could dedicate an upcoming learning session to this topic. In addition to that, you know, I want to thank the superintendent for really encouraging us, empowering us to share that he asked to be held accountable in his superintendent's evaluation despite only being here for 10 months and inheriting this mess to ensuring that we're making drastic improvements for our special education population moving forward. And I think that's a testament to his leadership and his faith in his team, that his team has the ability to really take this work and meet this charge with grace. And I do want to just finally say, you know, we, we're so appreciative of the, the parents and the Coalition for Students with Disabilities. I am hopeful that there will be a day when we're welcoming those of you who have left the district back to the district and continuing to utilize you as strong advocates for an underserved community. I have to believe that will happen. And I do know that our staff cares equally about ensuring that you feel welcome and ensuring that there is a day when we're coming together to meet the needs of all students in SAC City Unified. So thank you so much and we're going to move on to our next item, 10.3, the first reading of the draft board policy on immigration enforcement activities.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, members of the board. I'm Nathaniel Browning and with me I have Naveen Flores Dixit, attorney with the City of Sacramento's Fuel Network, and Sloane Simmons, partner at LaZano Smith in the Sacramento office. Tonight I'm excited to bring forward a new policy related to the district's safe haven efforts as a first reading. Board Policy 5145.13, Immigration Enforcement Activities will come back to you all at the next meeting as a consent agenda item for approval. Here's the district's core value statement. This is the driving light for this policy as well as all other work in our district. Additionally, this is our guiding principle stated here. It helps us ensure that staff focus on all students being given an equal opportunity to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the widest array of options. This directly relates to the district's safe haven focus so that students feel safe and confident enough to succeed to this level. Moving too slow with a clicker. As many of you know, the district declared itself a safe haven school district in December 2016 and has since been recognized for such leadership. The district recommitted and increased the focus on safe haven efforts in January 2018 with the passage of a second board resolution expanding safe haven efforts. The continued commitment of the district's safe haven efforts has focused on a number of areas throughout the district such as creating various protocols and training opportunities for staff and the community. Most recently, the district has been engaged with multiple partnerships to advance this work on a number of areas and some of those partnerships include the City of Sacramento's Fuel Network, California Rural Legal Assistance Foundation, Mexican Consulate, and others. Those partnerships have been forged to offer rapid responses to the needs of our students and families in the face of potential detainment or deportation. Initial trainings for staff and community members on a variety of topics such as DACA, ally trainings, know your rights, and other trainings and a variety of joint supports and efforts are underway. Many of these trainings build upon similar trainings that have been provided in the past but also offer new opportunities such as Train the Trainer modules currently being In early 2017, staff began reviewing policies and protocols that were in place in order to fine tune practices in relation to the safe haven efforts. Such reviews included enrollment practices and other to ensure that staff were not asking for or collecting sensitive or unnecessary student and family information. The district, Sacramento Teachers Association, and other labor partners also developed an initial protocol for staff to follow if immigration enforcement agents came to campus. Those protocols, along with guidance from the Attorney General's Office and our partners, will greatly inform the development of subsequent administrative regulations called for in the policy that's before you this evening. Most recently, staff have developed a set of defined business practices to follow in case a family member of a student has been detained. The business processes outline a rapid response in order to help secure legal protections for family members as well as provide socio-emotional supports to students whose family may be facing immediate detainment or deportation. The foundation of the policy before you this evening was based on sample language provided to us by the American Civil Liberties Union. From there, staff began reviewing and adjusting the language to best fit our local context and focus. Finally, the board's policy committee reached out to leading attorneys and community advocates in the area of immigration rights to form an ad hoc working group to review and fine tune the policy language. The overarching purpose of the policy itself is to ensure the equal access to public education regardless of immigration status to the fullest extent possible by law. ICE policies outline school property as sensitive locations where enforcement activities shall not occur except for exigent circumstances. This policy provides greater direction to staff and the community as to the, exactly what staff's response is if access to individuals or information is requested. That process is to simply have staff inform the enforcement officer that they do not have the authority to grant access and that they will have to forward the request to the superintendent and his legal staff for review. Just to be clear, staff will be denied whenever feasible under the law. This policy, as well as others, intentionally note that certain information such as social security numbers or country of origin information shall not be required from students or parents. Additionally, staff shall not divulge personal, personal information of students and families per FERPA requirements. The policy also calls for an MOU with local law enforcement providing support as school resource officers to not conduct immigration enforcement activities on district property. This is a key element to point out, however, it is also a bit redundant at this point because we are a school, safe haven school district located mostly within sanctuary city, located within a sanctuary state. But it's important nonetheless to call this out in policy for future reference. Lastly, the policy for staff trainings, lastly, the policy calls for staff trainings that the district is beginning to develop and explore with appropriate stakeholders as noted previously. The policy also calls for the distribution of this policy language to the community and we understand that this must be done in an accessible way rather than sharing written and approved document riddled with legal jargon. So staff will be working to disseminate this information appropriately. Another area for opportunity or focus for the staff is to develop the accompanying administrative regulations as noted throughout the policy in order to provide additional details and clarity for staff. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Naveen Flores Dixit. He among others were a part of the board policy committee effort among others. He and Sloane can speak a little bit to the finer points of this policy if needed.
Thank you. So the board policy committee met with advocacy groups two to three times and we took the ACLU sample and some of the staff edits and we discussed ways to customize it to the district's specific needs. And we also created a working group to, through email so we could discuss red line edits digitally. And the, the organizations that were part of that working group included the Fuel Network, which is housed by California Rural Legal Assistance Foundation, the Sacramento Fuel Food Bank, School Services of California, the Asian Pacific Bar Association, and Jeff Otter as an individual. And so some of the challenges or main focuses of the policy was defining who exactly this policy applied to and where, especially considering the numerous extracurricular activities students are involved with on and off campus. And I think that is clearly defined in footnotes three and five of the policy. Another thing we talked about was making sure that the policy was simple for district members to understand because if ICE is confronting them on district property, it's an extremely nerve-wracking situation. So we wanted to have a clear policy for them to follow. And another point of discussion was to make it so school personnel didn't feel like they had to be adversarial to ICE. And I think that we accomplished that by making it clear in the policy that school personnel besides the superintendent and his district legal counsel do not have the authority to give information to ICE.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, fellow board members. Sloane Simmons from LaZano Smith, part of the district's in-house counsel. I'm here tonight largely to answer any questions you might have in terms of the policy's compliance with the AG's guidelines, but just as kind of a broader look, your two key laws are SB54 and AB699. I'll move fast, I know you've had a long night already, not as long as you can go, but you've had a long night.
You've been here before.
AB699 is, is the policy, or the statute that drove the AG's issuance of recommended policies that had to be out by August 1. Kudos to your team who put your policy together because it was largely already in draft, near complete form when those guidelines came out. We conducted a review. There were minor changes that needed to be made simply to include some of the components of the AG's recommended policies, but in large part your, your policy team already had everything there in what's a very robust and comprehensive policy that covers all the critical aspects that you would want in play here. SB54 is also relevant to the extended prohibits, all state and, and local law enforcement officers including your SROs from involvement in immigration enforcement activities. So it plays into this policy. The Attorney General is also required by October 1 to issue some further recommended policies in this area. And looking at what's intended there, I think you're going to have already checked that box with the policies that get recommended by the AG in October with what you already have here. The five general areas covered by the Attorney General's guidelines, gathering and handling student and family information, sharing that information, responding to access requests by immigration agents, responding to detention and deportation of family members, and then hate crime and bullying. Those first four elements covered in great detail and adequately under the law and the AG's recommendations. The hate crimes bullying part is something you already, you have your BPNA R 5145.3 in place. You have your 5145.4 in place, your bullying and anti-discrimination policies. So you've largely already covered that. There's a needed addition of immigration status as a protected classification. My understanding is that you're reviewing your 5145.3 now. That's an easy add. So that's the one aspect that doesn't make sense to necessarily include comprehensively here because you already have your, your comprehensive policy. So in very good, if not outstanding alignment with, with the requirements of the law.
Thank you.
So the next steps are the approval of the policy on the consent agenda at the next board meeting. Staff will continue to work with various partners as appropriate to build out trainings and resources related to the policy and safe haven efforts generally. On that, we have a training on Monday morning for specific staff and it's a Train the Trainer for Know Your Rights. Also, like I previously said, we have to develop the administrative regulations in the very near future in addition to working with staff and the community to further expand safe haven efforts to include more student groups than what is traditionally thought of now. And with that, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Browning. First, we'll take public comments. Mr. Barrios, do we have any public comments?
We have six public comments. If you could line up in order, please.
Thank you.
First is Chavang, followed by Michael Tran, followed by Koia Yang, hope I got that right, Elizabeth Villanueva, Leilani Olguin, Andres Bohado, and Alejandro Cabrera.
Good evening, Superintendent Aguilar, Board President Ryan, and the members of the board. First, wanted to thank you all for your leadership and making the district a safe haven with Resolution 2915 and your continued commitment to making sure that all students in SAC City Unified School District feel safe. As you all know, I am also a product of SAC City Unified School District and continue to really support students in the district. So when I found out about the, the agenda item, one thing that really came up to mind was I had a text from one of my youth who is now a leader at a community college and last month in April, she sent me a frantic text about ICE being in Arden because she was, she had a trip with her high school students doing visits for college and they were really, really scared. And I think that was a reminder about the safety of our youth and the mindset that we as adults have to continue to really fight for them and make sure that they feel safe in, especially in our schools. That also being said, our work and a lot of our policy work, we also understand that resolutions and policies are passed, but they're just as good, they're only good as if the implementation of them, right? Practically, the proper implementation is really key and sure, to make sure that, that the students also really feel it in, at their school site levels. So really to have protocols and procedures and through a board policy is really crucial step to making sure that happens. And HIP is always, we always stand in solidarity with communities that face hate crimes and bullying from, especially from our Trump administration and ICE. And we're ready to work with you all to make sure that all our students are safe. And so we're here in support of the adoption of the board policy and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you so much. We appreciate HIP as well.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. My name is Michael Tran. I'm here as a concerned community member and I don't think I'm gonna tell you a lot of stuff you already don't know, but I would like to remind you. I really feel like this is a really big opportunity for the district, the school district, to really take a chance to show and prove to our students. I personally have worked in education for 15 years and one of the things I've learned that no longer works with our youth is the saying, "Do as I say, not as I do." And if we really want to make this a haven, our students have to see our And if we really want to make this a haven, our students have to see our adults stand up and really show them and lead the way that they are safe here. And another thing I learned along with that is the biggest foundation to learning for our youth, especially in challenging times and from really difficult circumstances, is you just can't learn when you don't feel safe. And our students really need to know that right now. They need to see it, and a lot of our immigrant students and youth, they don't, contrary to popular stereotypes, they don't live in the shadows, they don't exist in a vacuum. They're actually a really big part of the community, and they have very real and very deep relationships with their students, their classmates, their teachers, their community members. And they need to know that this will also affect not just the immigrant students, but the students that are friends with them, their teachers, and everyone that plays such a big role in creating a positive impact in their lives. So, if they can feel safe, they can learn, and if they can learn, then they can maybe one day work to make sure these meetings don't go this late on a school night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Goia, and I'm with the Southeast Asia Resource Action Center, C-RAG. We're a civil rights organization for Southeast Asian communities. We were also a member of the College for All Coalition, which sponsored the bill AB 699 authored by Assembly Member O'Donnell. Within the past one and a half years, we've seen just continuous attacks on immigrant and refugee communities over and over again. And we've also seen the various law enforcement that has also kind of played out in the attack of our immigrant and refugee communities, whether it's our own communities or communities that are within our own neighborhoods. And we know that ICE do not discriminate in terms of where they pick up folks. So, I'm really encouraged to see that there is this board policy that is really looking to provide a safe space for not only our students, but also their families as well. So, I'm here to say I am in full support of the adoption for the board policy. I definitely look forward to seeing how resources will be put into this board policy to ensure that there's proper implementation. And you know, that way, you know what Michael said earlier, so that our students can really focus on their learning instead of being in the shadows of fearing and suffering. So, thank you again for your leadership.
Thank you.
Antes que nada, me quiero referir a la madre familia, los estudiantes que están aquí que no hablan español. Estoy aquí en representación de todas aquellas voces que no han sido escuchadas, tanto estudiantes, padres, miembros de la comunidad y maestros. Estoy aquí como maestra, como ser humana, como hija de una madre que cruzó este país indocumentada. Espero que se nos escuche y que esto no se quede en un papel. With all due respect, I'm here representing the voices of families, students, my mother who crossed illegally, and myself. I'm here as a teacher, and as I mentioned and I shared with Nathaniel Browning, almost years ago, training, training is important to our teachers, to our faculty, to everybody to comprehend the human issue. Yes, I'm here to support the next step, and I will continue asking, how are we going to strengthen our efforts collaboratively, taking in consideration all the people that work with our students, with our families? How are we going to disseminate this information to the most affected people, our students or families, not just here and "train the trainers"? Yes, but who is in front of the lines? I asked you that before, and I will continue asking this. How are we getting this information to our families, to our students, who are the first one here? That's what we are here for, our students, our families, and ourselves. We are human beings. And I will continue, and every time that I come here, my legs are shaking, because this is not me. And I stopped being a classroom teacher. Why? For them, for my families, and for all of us, because we are a community, and I continue to have hope, and I hope that our teachers will get trained and be taken into more consideration into the next step. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leilani Olguin, and I come to you not only as a student, but as a dreamer. I'd like to start off by asking, is this safe haven that we hear about really safe? Can I and every other dreamer go to school reassured that our staff knows what they're doing, that they know the measures that have to be taken in case, you know, ICE shows up? Are there any measures being taken? What we're looking for is reassurance. We matter, and we want, we just want reassurance, and yeah.
Thank you.
My name is Andres Bohado. I'm a student at Luther Burbank High School, and I'm also a dreamer. I came here in 2012 to have a better life. Knowing the safe haven, its support to us, really motivate us to continue with education. And we want to know what's safe haven? What does safe haven do for us, and what's it going to do if ICE shows up to the school? We want to know how the district is going to help us to train the student, no, I'm sorry, the teachers and all the staff at the school to manage the situation if ICE shows up. So, we want to know what the next step is going to be. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent, my name is Alejandro. I'm here in behalf of Councilmember Guerra. I couldn't be here today, but I'm mainly here to thank this board and the superintendent and his staff for being such a good allies with the city of Sacramento, and to thank you for considering this resolution tonight and hopefully for voting for it when it comes back for an actual vote. But I just want to highlight that from day one, the school district staff, board members, support staff, and even some of our students have been pretty vocal and supportive in standing up with the city of Sacramento, advocating for our families and standing against discriminatory policies of the administration. And as we navigate this conversation and this dark political climate, we find more and more that school districts in our schools are really at the epicenter of the conversation on immigration, because when we're talking about families and students, they really see their teachers, their support staff, and even you as board members as their first point of contact for information, for resources. And so, with that in mind, councilmembers support a policy that solidifies the commitment of the school district to protect families and to showcase original effort that we care about our families and that we also support longstanding traditions of welcoming those from undeveloped communities and undeveloped circumstances. So, we hope that we can count the support from all the board members when this item comes back to council, to vote for the next meeting. So, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Alejandro. I don't think we have any other public comments at this time. This is the first reading, so at this time, we'll take questions from board members. First, we have one from Board Member Cochran.
I'd like to make a comment before I actually ask a question. We have a president that was elected by the Electoral College, and we have him for four years. In this year that we've had him, I've been extremely proud of this district, because we have said no. And I know that we have a lot of work to do, and I very much appreciate the students and la señora, la maestra, who came up. And I'm looking forward that Nathaniel will address some of their questions. My question for you, Nathaniel, indeed, is just very simple. What kind, well, there's two, actually. What kind of problems do you see in pushing forward with this? That's number one. And what type of help do you need?
So, I'm not sure of any problems that we've been able to identify yet that we haven't been able to overcome. In the process of reviewing the policy language, we did a number of scenarios that we worked through and talked through. There are some difficult conversations in figuring out how best we should lay that out in policy. I think that the administrative regulation that's going to be forthcoming will also take a huge leap forward in fine-tuning any pieces around clarity as it pertains to the policy language and what staff need to be doing. More globally, I think another area that the district and partners have been working on are the development of a series of trainings. Right now, as I spoke to briefly, there's a second of a series of four trainings that are being provided to social workers and key department staff within CERNA right now. The training has largely been there, but we're finessing it and fine-tuning it for our needs. The next step after this series is to develop trainings for the principals and front office staff and work with all of our labor partners accordingly to develop additional trainings and kind of grow out from there. So, I'm sure we will come across areas of opportunity and just to work collectively within our partners and community to address that. I think that working with the support that the board has shown over the last two years is very key and critical, and I stress to keep working with the superintendent with his leadership in addition to yours. There's been a number of really amazing projects that are starting to be underway around safe haven. So, just partnering with the entire governance team and figuring out what safe haven looks like going forward.
Board Member Vang.
Thank you, President Ryan. First, I want to thank Nathaniel and Naveen for working incredibly hard with our community-based organizations, our civil rights advocacy group. I know we've worked on this board policy for a few months. And what I also wanted to share was that, you know, last year, we voted to pass this safe haven resolution, right? But that was really just the first step in affirming our commitment to providing really a safe and inclusive environment for our students. I really want to make clear that when we talk about safe haven, it's not about just our one or two resolution or even this one board policy, but it's really us being intentional about reviewing and updating all our board policy, right? So, if you read this policy, it's regarding immigration enforcement activities, right? This is not where we're going to end when we talk about safe haven, right? It's also about reviewing policies around our students with disability. It's also about reviewing our policy, our law enforcement policy in regards to law enforcement, SRO interaction with students on campus. So, when we talk about safe haven, it's about our undocumented students, it's about our students with disability, it's all of our students. And I also know that in a few weeks, we're going to be talking about a new policy that we're bringing to the board for our transgender and gender non-conforming students as well. And so, I want to just put that out there. I also want to thank our students who came out here today, our dreamers, and also the incredible work that Elizabeth has been doing at Luther Burbank. What I do want to ask is, and I really appreciate all the great work we've been doing around safe haven. I know we've had two series of trainings, Nathaniel, and I know that this policy, when we vote, you know, is coming to vote on June 7th, it really calls for staff training. But in particular, I'm interested to hear from you, because I haven't heard trainings around teachers. And, you know, Ms. Vinoles talked about, you know, really making sure that we also train our teachers, because really, they're also on the front lines. And so, if you can share a little bit about that, that would be great. What is the district's staff's next steps in terms of working with SETA and also making sure that we roll out these trainings to our teachers as well?
Yeah, the intention is to have all staff in the district trained. Right now, we, because there's so many staff members at so many different levels, we are really being intentional about who needs to be trained first and foremost in order to start developing other trainings and supports. For example, the original initial group of 100 plus or minus staff members that are going through the original series of trainings were chosen because they are critical in the rapid response type supports that we are building out for families in case a family member is detained. Those staff members throughout the district are going to go connect with the family, connect them with legal services to help slow down the deportation process and hopefully stop it, in addition to providing the social emotional supports to those students specifically. We felt like, staff felt like, that that was the critical first step. And like I said, that's also giving us the opportunity to storm and norm what these trainings look like and how we can begin to roll them out and work with our labor partners such as SETA to fine-tune trainings for teachers. But not only that, SEIU and their rank and file and et cetera.
Thank you. Do we have a timeline on that regarding trainings for teachers that we're looking at?
Right now, we have a timeline for building out the initial series for the 100 staff members and working on trainings for principals and front office managers is what we've been talking about. We're going to start talking about training for additional teachers and office yard duty and such like that as we start rolling into summer.
Okay. Thank you.
Board Member Pritchett, followed by Board Member Wu.
Thank you, President Ryan. Props to SAC City. This is great work. We're really stepping out, and I want our superintendent to know that, you know, we really appreciate the hard work that's been done with you and staff. I just have a very quick question. You had mentioned about the Social Security, people recording their Social Security number, and it kind of struck a bell with me, because I know at the beginning of the school year, when us parents get the big thick packets that we have to fill out with all of the information, contact forms, we ask for Social Security numbers. Is that going to change?
That changed.
It did?
This last fall.
Okay, well, that's good, because I haven't had a kid in school this year, but I remember always striking a line through, and I've had parents make comments to me before about the whole Social Security.
Change in statute as of last, change in statute as of last year that prohibited that collection in part in relation, if you recall, that the big issue with the CD, there was a large complaint in which there was a number of special education students' Social Security numbers that were at issue, and it led to a legislative change. So, at this point, you can't collect it, but there is an exception within your policy consistent with the collection of the four last numbers, if necessary, for certain federal programs such as free and reduced price lunch.
Fabulous. Well, good job for being on top of it.
Lastly, on that piece, we have updated administrative regulations around the enrollment processes to reflect that change as well.
Great. Thank you. Board Member Wu.
Thank you, President Ryan. I just want to make one comment. I want to thank the team who worked on this, Naveen, Sloan. You know, it's easy to be a leader and adopt a resolution that says, "We will be a safe haven." This was a real heavy lift for me, to translate the resolution to board policy, to identify what does this really mean, really digging into the weeds and thinking about every scenario that we could as we're walking through this. So, as I said, this is a real heavy lift. It's probably one of the heaviest lifts I'd have to do on the Policy and Governance Committee, but I really want to thank you guys for digging in and helping guide us along, and everybody else's participation as well, because all eyes on this really, really helped. So, I want to thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate all the comments of my board members, and once again, want to thank Naveen and Nathaniel. Naveen in particular, I do want to share, you know, Board Member Vang and myself, as well as our other board members, knew that our safe haven resolution was only as strong as the implementation and the board policies and administrative regulations that would accompany it. We received guidance from the ACLU, we received guidance from the Attorney General's office, and I'm proud to say with your help, Naveen, and our community input, we have and I'm proud to say with your help, Naveen, and our community input, we have, I believe, a stronger board policy than even the guidance that was issued at a state level. And so with that, there truly is a sense of protection for our students beyond the bare minimums that were being offered. I do want to also acknowledge both Liz and the comments of our brave young dreamers. We need to figure out, how do we disseminate this information in a way that is relatable to our students and teachers so that they know that we've taken action once again, that we are continuing to go above and beyond with our commitment as a safe haven, and so that they do feel included, safe, and welcomed in our district? And I'll be interested in hearing our communications plan moving forward.
Great, thank you. And I do want to say thank you to Naveen for calling out and thanking everyone that was a big part of this process, the group effort. One person that was left off that list that was actually a really big help was Raul Bozio, who couldn't be here tonight.
Thank you so much for acknowledging Raul's contributions. Wonderful. Moving on to item 11.0, our consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Second, student preferential vote?
I vote yes on all open session items included in the consent agenda.
Wonderful.
I'm sorry, President Ryan. I have my light on. I'd like to pull item-
Oh, I'm sorry. My screen was not up. Board Member Cochran, you wish to pull an item?
Yes, I do. I'd like to pull item, I believe it's 11.1K. And the reason I'm pulling it is not really anything but to bring attention to it. Many years ago, when I first started teaching, teaching EL, I did not have any materials in the classroom to speak of, aside from a few minor texts. And I spent five years creating my own material, and it was quite difficult. Just recently, we had the vetting and the discussion of some material that we're going to use in classrooms with students with moderate and severe disabilities. And this part of the consent agenda is asking for an adoption. I just wanted to take a minute to read one of the many, a section of one of the many emails I received from teachers. This teacher says, "I worked in this district for 24 years as a language, speech, and hearing specialist. In that time, I've worked at every grade level from preschool to adult ed. I've also worked with many moderate, severe, special day classes. I have pushed for many years for this population to have a curriculum. We teachers have worked doubly hard to create materials and lessons for these students, and the education of these students across the district and the grade level is so important, and we're so grateful to have this material." So I urge that this, along with the rest of the consent agenda, be approved.
Okay, I will second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 12.0, business and financial information. 12.1, receive business and financial information reports. Item 13.0, future board member meeting dates and locations. Our next board meeting for the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education will be held on June 7th. With that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Student? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.